Check real quick, I assume there isn't. Is there anybody on Zoom who is here to be heard on Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District? Who'd like to make a citizen comment? Okay, next order of business is our consent agenda. Item one on the consent agenda is approval of meeting minutes from the February 20th, 2024 meeting. And the second item is ratification of payment of bills. And those Thompson bills amount to $1,247.49. Payroll amounts to $1,799.78 for total bills and payroll of $3,047.27. All right, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner McGann, second from Commissioner McCurdy. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. We do not have a general report. And the chief's report is that he is out of town right now and everything is being looked after. So that we've no new oral business with Thompson. So that concludes our Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District meeting today. I will adjourn the meeting at 4:02. Thank you. I think those are fastest Thompson meeting ever. We will move on to our Board of Canvassers. This is the Board of Canvassers meeting to certify the election results from the March 5th, 2024 Democratic Presidential Primary. I'll call the meeting to order right now. All present are the same commissioners who were here at the Thompson meeting and the same administration staff. We also have Deputy Clerk Dana Van Horn with us. So I will turn it over to Dana for presentation of the election results. Thanks Dana.
Thanks, Chuck. Can you guys hear me okay?
Can hear you perfectly.
Excellent. So in your packet, you should have sort of a summary of the ballots that we received and counted. Our numbers were really good. Turnout was, you know, as to be expected in a primary where we only mailed out 1,200 ballots. But, you know, we were about 50% there of the ones that we mailed. The paper made it sound a little less because they counted all the voters. But anyway, everything went super smooth. We held the audit on the March 13th on Wednesday. And Commissioner McCurdy was nice enough to come in and witness that and that excitement that we went through. We had only 27 ballots of the ones that we received that we did not count. Mostly due to a postmarked date that was dated after the 4th of March, which was the cutoff. We are expecting to have the regular primary election on June 25th, which should be a similar product, partisan primaries, so much fewer ballots sent out than the general election in November. Do you guys have any questions about the ballots or about our procedures or processes?
Thanks Dana. Any questions for Dana? It looks like not. Yeah, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to our actions items. Yeah, we have our great, our discussion and approval of our action item certification of the results of the March 5th, 2024 Democratic Primary. We've received all of the information in our packet and Dana's just gone over that. So I would entertain a motion to certify. Thanks Bill. I think so. Anyway, okay. Anyway, we have a, we have a motion to certify those results from Commissioner Winfield and a second from Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you Dana.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me too. Sign it. Go right now. Okay, okay. All right, we'll just take care of this business very quickly and then we'll get on to our regular commission meeting. All right, moving on. I will adjourn the Board of Canvassers meeting. And I will now open our regular Grand County Commissioner Commission meeting, March 19th. It is 4:06. Present are Commissioners Kevin Walker, Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Mike McCurdy, Mary McGann, myself, Jacques Kattler, County Attorney Stephen Stocks, County Administrator Mallory Nassau, as well as Associate Administrator Quinn Hall. All right, let's see, our first order of business is to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their government, which stands for our nation. I give this for the liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on to our citizens to be heard session. This is our first citizens to be heard. There will also be a session at six o'clock. If you're here to make a comment, please raise your hand and I will invite you forward and give you three minutes to speak. Please announce your name before you make a comment. Yes, sir.
My name is Dave Fosser and I live on 500 West. I'd like to share a few concerns I have with the Canyon Creek Preservation and Development Project and why I feel a CUP should be approved at this time for the wastewater treatment plan. First, in May of '23, an attorney for the developers wrote the county stating that an agreement had been signed with GWSSA to operate this plant. As proved, he included a vague agreement from '21, 2021. At that time, the developers only needed the treatment plant to serve their proposed 100 unit campground, not the current 586 unit project. What I gather, GWSSA may not have the experience or manpower to operate a facility at this size. If GWSSA is not able to operate the plant as required, it may be difficult finding an operator who can in our small town. As such, providing a signed agreement with an experienced and reliable operator should be a prerequisite for approving this CUP. Not something vague, but one that details the full responsibilities of the operator required to ensure reliable service. Second, County Ordinance 598 prohibits wastewater treatment plant within the 500 year floodplain. But as depicted by the developers, portions of the proposed plant will be within the 500 year and possibly the 100 year floodplains. As such, this plant will not comply with the Ordinance 598 and the CUP should be denied. Third, Ordinance 598 also states that floodplain development permits will only be approved if there is, quote, "safety of access to the property in times of flood for ordinary and emergency vehicles," end quote. At present, roughly 90% of Canyon Creek Boulevard through the project will be underwater during a 100 year flood and that's before any fill works. The developers have not completed fill for what appears to be Phase 1 of their project. It's approximately two feet higher than Canyon Creek Boulevard and runs essentially from the pavement to the riverbank. They've essentially built a dam that's around 630 feet across, roughly the same width as the main channel of the river at this point. It's very likely during a 100 year or lesser flood that Canyon Creek Boulevard will become an impassable channel of the Colorado River. The developers' added fill will almost certainly increase the level of flooding on Canyon Creek Boulevard. Before any additional permits are issued, it seems imperative the developer raise the road as required to ensure safe access through their development. Both for recreational users and those living further out that rely on Canyon Creek Boulevard as the only access to their homes. Two floodplain permits, development permits have already been issued for the fill. Safe access is a requirement under both of these permits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to come forward and make comment? Is there anyone on Zoom who is here to make a public comment? All right, we will have another citizens to be heard session at six o'clock. We will move on to our presentation today. Our presentation is by the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources, the UTWR, for delivery of pilt payment for property zoning in Grand County. And I'd welcome Chris Wood, who's the Regional Supervisor for the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources. Um, actually wherever you like, the microphone is live at the podium or if you prefer to sit, you can do that as well, Chris.
Either way, I think I usually sit or stand here, so.
Great, thanks.
I come here every year about this time of year to deliver our pilt payment. Pilt is a payment in lieu of taxes. So I'm Chris Wood. I'm the Regional Supervisor for the southeastern part of the state. And it's great to be here. I would do want to introduce Sergeant Devon Shirley. He's relatively new to this area. He's moved to Monticello and will be our sergeant for this area for hopefully years to come. So we did have, we have been short on officers the last few years. Officer Wallerstein, that many Moab citizens know, went to Colorado to pursue a career over there. And we had a few officers in the Monticello area that resigned and took other employment. So we've been short several officers the last year or so. We have had officers throughout the state come in and fill in during the busy times of the year, especially during the hunt. But it's, it's good to have Devon and his leadership with us. He'll be in Monticello, but covering really all of Grand, San Juan counties and also parts of Wayne and Garfield County, so.
Great, welcome. Thanks.
I'll also discuss some, some of our property here in Grand County. I'm here delivering a payment for $4,358.49. And like I said, it's a pilt payment that we give every year. It's for the property that we own here in Grand County, specifically the Nash Wash Wildlife Management Area in the South Bookcliffs. It's also called Cunningham Ranch. You might be familiar with that. And then we also own some property here in the valley. With the Nature Conservancy, we own and manage the Scott and Norma Matheson Wetlands Preserve. And so that's a great piece of land that we own and manage and that I know that the residents love and enjoy. We manage these lands for wildlife and habitat conservation. And most of our properties, public access and public use is also welcome and encouraged. That's certainly the case for the properties here in Grand County. There are some, you know, some rules we have on the Matheson Preserve, like no dogs and no bikes. But for the most part, we welcome low impact recreation and hunting and fishing throughout our properties on, throughout the state. The check that we'll deliver today is paid for by money that is generated from fishing and hunting license sales. And so in Utah, a lot of wildlife conservation happens because we hunt and fish in Utah. I appreciate the partnership we have with Grand County. I am in regular contact with, with Commissioner McGann. She's part of the Canyon Country Partnership Program that I'm also involved with. So I see her every month or two and we share updates on what's happening in the county, what's happening with the Division of Wildlife. Commissioner Hedin is also an active player in wildlife management in the county and in the state. She has, sits on several committees or has sat on several committees throughout, throughout the years. So we appreciate that. I can answer any questions. I thought maybe I'd give an update on kind of a, an, a topic that's come up in the last few weeks in Grand County is regarding the Seggo Trailhead. And so just to familiar, just to keep, keep you up to speed on that. The Seggo Trailhead is a trailhead that's on Sitla land. It's, it's butts up against the tribal land. And it's the, where all the backcountry horsemen and hunters and hikers park their vehicles and unload their horses and park their horse trailers in camp before they head into the roadless area of the Bookcliffs. We've had an agreement with the Ute tribe to walk through a little piece of their property so we could access the South Bookcliffs area or the roadless area of the Bookcliffs. And in the last month or so, the tribe has canceled that agreement. And so we're working with the tribe on a new agreement. We're hoping that happens soon. But we don't have an agreement in place right now. And so really, the roadless area of the Bookcliffs, which people love to go recreate in, is, is really hard to get to without that access. And so we'll continue to work with the tribe to redo the agreement and come to terms we can all agree upon. And hopefully that access is preserved through a new agreement long term. In the meantime, there's been some concern with some residents on finding alternative routes or improving or developing alternative routes into that area. And so we formed a little team as an agency with the BLM and with Sitla and with backcountry hunters and fishermen and with, 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 with horsemen, some sportsman groups, some conservation groups. Commissioner Hedin is also involved in this effort to look at alternative ways and routes and trails to get us into the, to the roadless area of the Bookcliffs, both long term and short term. So we'll meet on April 24th and develop some ideas. Yeah, hopefully that agreement with the tribe is renewed soon and we can access that area through their land as we have for the last few decades. So I think that's all I have unless you have any other questions.
Thanks Chris. Any questions for Chris at this time? I definitely appreciate you coming down and, and the report as well.
Who do I hand the check to?
Okay, perfect.
Hey, can we get a giant novelty check? Looks out next time.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you so much. All right, that was our sole presentation. Today, we have no department reports or agency reports, so we'll move on to general reports. We'll move on to permission member disclosures and I'll start again regarding agenda item number one, escape adventures enforcement. I'll recuse myself from that conversation. Anyone else have anything they would like to disclose concerning today's agenda? Okay, we will move on to general commission reports and considerations. Kevin, are you ready to go?
Sure. I had a couple of meetings with Forest Service and separately with BLM. Just want to let everyone know again that there's going to be major work on the Loop Road starting any moment now. I think we're already within the window and it sounds like it, you know, could be quite disruptive with long delays and things like that. So anyone heading up to the mountains should keep that in mind for the next several months.
And that's the south entrance to the Loop Road going up through San Juan County?
That's right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I think there's also going to be work on Spanish Valley Drive in San Juan County as well. Let's see, snowpack, 100% of normal. There was a big avalanche up there. Porcupine campground might be opening in early summer. From the BLM, they're still working on the A1 lithium PA. See, there's going to be a new helium pipeline going in Big Flat. And sometimes soon they should start getting geared up for travel, revising the travel manager plan for the Lars Triangle area.
Great, thanks. Evan?
I met with Cemetery District Board. Things are rocking and rolling out there. They might be turning the water on soon. So that's always, you might get comments about watering, but it's no changes, same as always. Sand Flats Stewardship Committee met and there was vacancy on the board and they held interviews and forwarded a recommendation, which doesn't look like it made it on this meeting's agenda. So that will be coming soon, but that was the meat of that meeting. And yesterday, there was a hearing session with the new State EMS Division, the Director Darren Bushman was in town. So they kind of moved from the health and medical sector, EMS moved from the health and medical state regulations into the Department of Public Safety. So there was a, just a lot of back and forth, question and answer session. And it was well attended and it seems like there's a lot of support for EMS at the state level. And so I hope to keep that momentum going. And then met with even Special Service District this morning. And it was just kind of the normal monthly meeting with updates around there. And there were a few things that may come later, so that's all I got for now.
Great, thank you Evan. Bill?
Yeah, I met with the Motorized Trail Committee a few days ago. There were several cleanup and fence building projects that different groups are working on. There were some reports from GCAD and the Trail Ambassadors that came to that group as well with what they're in the process with. I also had a meeting with Josh from the Utah Raptor State Park and UDOT and Megan Blackwelder. Hopefully I didn't butcher that name. I think you got a perfect time. And that was in regards to the multi-use trail and getting that extended. And so construction could possibly start this spring if all of the permits fall into place correctly. And then there's some additional funding that will likely be needed. And there's some possibility that the Utah Trails Network is going to help with that. So it's not confirmed yet.
Do you know, Bill, do you know if they're, are they going to keep that on the east side of the highway going up from the, like the Brands Trail?
They're still exploring. But yes, the, because it's currently on the west side, right? Where it ends at the 313 highway. And they're exploring, seeing if they can get it under the bridge, which is just this side of there. And if they can't, then they've got to come up with some other way to get to the other side of the highway. But they do want to try and stay on the east side.
Got it. Okay, great.
So they're still working on getting across the road there, whether they can go under it or how they're going to do it. I was also part of the Colorado River Advisory Council meeting in St. George. We had a couple of different people that presented there, Amy Haas, the Executive Director of the Colorado River Authority. And then, let's see, she basically brought us up to date on some of the discussions that are going on between the upper and the lower basin and what looks like it's going to settle into some healthy debates before it's all finalized on how things will look in the future after the 2026 date, when the current packet comes to an end. And then we also were visited by Celeste Malloy, US Congresswoman. And she sits on the Energy, Natural Resources and Public Lands. And so she was updating us on what's going on in DC with water and also some state control that the state of Utah is working on to maintain some control. And then also I've been working in the background on the Thompson Springs replat. And I think it's probably time to put a little committee together to get going on that. I believe that, well, I know that Mr. Peeny, hopefully I'm saying that correctly also. I always want to say something else, but Peeny has said that he's in agreement with the new plans, him and his brother both. And so I think that that's really been the crux. The crux. And so I think if we could put a little group together and start moving forward to that, it'd be good.
That's good news. Yeah, thanks for working on that. That is good news.
Real good news. And that's all I've got.
All right, thanks Bill. Mike?
Mine was pretty simple. OSTA actually canceled their meeting. As we all know, Jeep Safari is coming through and they were busy with the prep of Jeep Safari and in general out there. Other meetings come up later in the month, but that was, that's it for me.
All right, thanks.
Shorty, you have a cruise to do this.
Yes, the only meeting, and I didn't really attend it, I watched it because I was in DC when it was on, was the Travel Council. And it was exciting to hear that they're going to start promoting wedding venues. People coming here for weddings in the, thank you, destination weddings. And it seems like national parks are a huge draw for people to come and get married near or in a national park. Ben talked about his trip to, over in Germany for the conference, the International Conference, and came up with some concerns about that they're not promoting when summer month as much as they should in, in Europe. So he went and talked to the people upstate, the Office of Tourism, to see if that can be corrected. They're also working with Love's Communication and we'll be hearing from, what's some of the stuff that's going on later on in the meeting. So I'll stop there. And then, like I said, most of my time was spent up in Washington DC. We visited with 10 representatives, four senators and three divisions. I had Jacques this time lead out all the conversations. And as everyone would expect, he did a great job. And we were very well received. We worked, we talked about maintaining funding was our number one ask. Don't, don't mess around with it because that, that was like a steady budget. We talked about the transfer of the land and got very, very good feedback from everyone. Everyone was like, very supportive of local control of that land. And I was really impressed with, it was Senator Kelly from Arizona gave us lots of ideas on ways to find monies to make the park.
Right.
If and when it becomes part of our ownership. So I, I thought that was probably one of my favorite meetings because we came away with some real good ideas how to move forward in our meeting with John Curtis, involved John Curtis and many of his staff, Corey and Jake. And he's interested, he was very aware, well aware of what's going on with the water in Thompson and wanted to know where the Umtre project stood with granting the.
The water, the water rights.
He was very concerned about. And the cost of the pipe to go to Thompson. So I was impressed with that, that he came up with that. I know the, the leadership in Grand Junction and Moab are aware of that. And so the wheels of the federal government move even slower than the county government and state. So, but it's always a possibility. It'd be very expensive, but it would be a way to get water there. I'm going to let Jacques take over.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just color that report a little bit. Yeah, it was great meeting. We had three days of meetings with, with representatives. I also, I want to give just a huge thanks to the Utah delegation. Super gracious. Our Representative Curtis always meets with us. He's always great, great conversations, very well informed. But we had appointments with staff from all the other Utah delegation. And when we were in the offices, a lot of time, it's crazy when you go to these offices, there's a lot of staff hanging out. There's, there's like at least two other parties in there that have meetings with other various staffers or with the actual congresspeople and they're, and they're, the congresspeople are always running out to take votes or whatever. And C-SPAN is on the big TV in the, in the office, et cetera. But both at Representative Malloy's and Representative Moore's, Blake Moore and Celeste Malloy's offices, they heard that, we were there, they heard that, that Grand County was there meeting and they were in another room and they both came out and greeted us very warmly and, and talked about our project personally, which was, which was really nice, especially Blake Moore. He brought us back into a room and sat down with us and asked us, you know, some pointed questions about it, which, and so that was very appreciated. So our Utah delegation is very aware of what's going on here and is definitely supportive and gracious. So yeah, yeah, all of those meetings went well. We also met with, we, first I'll add that it wasn't just Mary and I. Mayor Langanese and Councilman Taylor were also there with us, working on the same, the same issues together. It was, it was a united front.
Sometimes we had to divide and conquer.
Right.
Because we, it was too.
Two, two meetings were too close together.
Too close together and it's quite a dis- Too close together and it's quite a distance between the Senate buildings and the
Lots of lots of running around. But we did meet um with the Department of Transportation about essential air service. Um we met with Mark Rajio, who who is kind of our guy. I think you guys have probably seen his name on emails when we were going back and forth with the essential air and um and he's yeah, he's he's obviously in Washington, but he was very, very aware of all the details of our situation. Um something that was interesting that he said is that is that the situation with Mob and Vernal actually reached all the way up to the um Secretary of Transportation when we were going through that. Um it doesn't look like we have much recourse right now, unfortunately. Um we were kind of looking for a, you know, throwing a throwing a bit of a hail mary. Um but but they are aware of the situations. It's not, it doesn't go um unnoticed at all. They're they're intimately aware of all the details of of our um project. We met with Mark as well as another gentleman. I his name's on the tip of my tongue, but I can't remember. But he was also a representative of essential air.
Yeah, one thing uh he mentioned that uh he works very closely with Tammy Howl, Howl How and that she he's very appreciative of her professionalism and what she does for this airport. Think she's does a very good job.
Yeah, he had he had great things to say about Tammy as well as the um Airport Director up in Vernal. So he he talked to both of them uh regularly. Um we also went to the um the NRC, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. And we talked about um after the we we talked about kind of closing procedures as well as um some questions about the final site up in Crescent Junction and how it would be capped. And um and got a little bit of insight and had some back and forth with the folks of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission who kind of work parallel kind of with the um with the Department of Energy. You know, it's a different group, but there's it's also involved. Um so that was also very interesting. That was a long subway ride out to suburban Maryland for for that meeting. Um and otherwise, uh yeah, I think it was a productive trip. We got got stuck in Denver for a day, but that's a or missed a day. Yeah.
Just the other thing that we did touch on oftentimes was that if uh it would be nice to move the time entry to from pilot to being permanent because right now they're held at they can't do any infrastructure change. They want to do another booth where people that have totally paid and such can go through so they can, you know, but as long as it's a pilot, they can't do anything to the infrastructure. So we did encourage that so that we could improve the time entry even more.
Right. All right. Um and and that was the only, I didn't I didn't have any other meetings um last week. So that was my report. Uh Trish also emailed over a report she asked me to read for her. Um on the twelfth, uh she met with Sitla Jameson Wiggins, our sheriff, and the permit holder on the East Taboos to discuss the issue of feral cattle within the roadless area of the Book Cliffs and how to manage these populations. Uh she says they are an estimated few hundred feral cows in this area of the Book Cliffs. Um the same day she spoke with the uh with the Elm Greens along with the Museum of Moab to discuss possible infrastructure to protect the Rubido inscription in the Book Cliffs on that um on that ranch. Uh on the thirteenth, um there was an Anson Blackstone Minerals Open House in Green River. Uh Trish says, thank you to Cora Phillips, who's our emergency manager, as well as Tony Mancuso uh for attending uh I guess a well next to both the town of Green River and the river itself, an exploratory well for brine to extract lithium, hit a pocket of carbon dioxide at approximately fifteen hundred feet down on Friday, the eighth of March, and pushed brine water overwhelming the capacity of the system and breaching the site. They opened their berm and allowed that water to flow into an old uranium mill site. The concern was that these waters would enter into Brown's Wash and down into the Green River. The goal of the well is to go approximately ten thousand eight hundred feet to reach the brine needed for lithium extraction. It should be noted that Anson expects to employ approximately eighty-five to a hundred people eventually on site in Green River. They have uh two hundred and fifty acre feet of the Green River water secured and will need that amount of water per year to process lithium. They have another twenty-five hundred acre feet least. Uh I'm recommending Trish was recommending that Anson come and do a presentation to the commission to describe their objectives of possible exploration within Grand County. Um and then on the fourteenth, uh Team Rubicon, she writes uh that Councilman Topper, as well as herself, met with Team Rubicon and OSTA to acknowledge their fire mitigations effort the past week within the mill and Pat Creek drainages. And she says, thank you to Bega and Melissa for providing some swag to the team. Thank you, guys. And that is all that Trish had to report. Um all right, we'll move on to uh elected official reports and I'll start with our attorney, Stephen.
Um no updates today.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Uh and Gabe is not here today, so we'll move on. Actually, is Jameson online? Okay. All right, um we will move on to Administrator Report, Mallory.
I will be fast. Um we did at the last meeting, I know there was a rush to end by a certain time, so I did not give a report. Uh so some of these things might be outdated, but we did have a Spanish Valley Pathway Meeting. Not since the last meeting, but in the past month. Uh and two things um will be wrapped up by tonight. One is a change order design that happened a few weeks ago. Um so that lets us move forward and then later on the agenda, you'll see the right away easement acquisition policy update. Um and so once that is done, we can also move on to another phase. So slowly but surely. Um let's see, I submitted the CIB list that you all approved um along with an updated CASI, which is our capital asset um self-inventory list. Um I'm waiting to hear back on that because I definitely want to make sure that it's as final and as thorough as it needs to be. Um and I'm also uh waiting to hear back on the CIB list because I know the city had one item that we bumped off the list. I think we bumped two off. Um but one of them, they wanted back on there, but they have applied for a CIB grant for it and are still waiting to hear. Uh so I I did let the CIB know that if we heard from them, we might change it if time allows, but otherwise you know, we wouldn't want to kick somebody else off the list. So the city could have one that they've already applied for. They get it. Um let's see. I attended the Umtre kind of concept grant planning team little meeting. It's still very much in in the works, but I think it will be a good project and it's just a matter of waiting to hear um if we get the grant and then deciding how we can all move forward together or if we don't get it, um what you all would like to do with that opportunity. Um something that is kind of on the radar for everyone. I know a few of you um have been a part of conversations, but we will be establishing a formal county fair board. Um I really for the amount of money that's being spent, I I think it actually probably triggers the need for an open and public meeting, but also, you know, if we really want to be bringing folks here. I know like Mary said, yeah, in the E-DAP meeting that it came up a little bit and she presented and it's great to see how many people were interested and excited and had ideas to help um promote it. And so I think by having a formal board group, uh we will of course follow all of the rules required, but it it could help um have citizens participate, just a little more transparency um and ways for folks to be a part of it. So hopefully that will be on the next agenda. And also on the next agenda, we'll have a USU four H um extension resolution just of support on just encouraging the use of our facilities for their clubs and various events, whatnot. And so this is just an attempt to really formalize that, but also give them some clear, basic steps forward. So they know how and uh what to do if they want to utilize any of our facilities. And the last thing is we had one of our kind of annual in Indigent Defense Commission meetings with the state um that is tied to public defense and it was just just a cool thing. We've worked with them for many years and it's always good to catch up. And they are maybe doing a case study highlight of Grand County that will be um the feature for their their monthly news article. So if that is at the case, I'll send it along, but I think that's all I have and I'll stop.
Great, thanks Mallory. Anything to add to that, Quinn?
No, I think that about covers it. Okay.
Perfect, thanks. All right, that brings us to the end of our general reports. And uh moving right along, we will get into our general business action items, um discussion and consideration of approval. And the first item on our list is uh Escape Adventures Enforcement Discussion. Uh the conditionally used permit was not granted for parcel number zero two dash zero zero five A dash zero 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 two. Um again, I'll remind everyone that I'm recusing myself from the discussion and this discussion, it was kind of a continuation of the action item from the last meeting where that uh uh CUP was not approved. So I'll turn it over to Jenna from Planning and Survey.
Yeah, uh yeah, as you stated, this item was carried over from last meeting. Um at your last meeting on March fifth, the commission had voted three to three to deny that CUP. So the applicant wasn't granted that CUP. Um the secondary item, well, excuse me, it was for uh an outfitter guide uh service and facility. And then the second portion of that uh proposed motion included directive from the commission for a period of time that they were going to choose to require the applicant to come into compliance with the land use code permitted there, which would include ceasing all commercial activity on the property and also removing any uh commercial related equipment on the property. Um I believe the commission had discussed potentially taking some recommendation from the PZ office on uh a time period that we might think would be appropriate. So after discussion with the planning director today, we would just kind of like to jumpstart that conversation between ninety and a hundred and twenty days and let you pick up the conversation from there.
Thank you very much, Jenna.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Stephen. Just just one thing to note. So the individual applicant for the CUP, they filed um the appeal. They haven't paid for it though, which is required to be able to actually file and process the appeal. But they've made it clear that it's their intent to appeal the process. Um I I just want to note that the second part is everything that we discussed today is going to be part of the record that they that uh our appellate body looks at. So just letting everybody know that and those are my only only comments. And so if the commission wants to consider a stay, they could do that. If they want to consider enforcement, they could do that. Um but we need four votes at the end of the day.
Great, thank you, Stephen. And also I uh the applicant is in the room. Um so I I don't want to make the call, but if you guys want to ask him any questions, I would suggest inviting him up. Yes, Mike.
Plan is to go through the uh appeal process?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, come come forward and yeah, thanks, Mary.
You have to say your name.
Good day.
The whole fair.
I'm Eric Golds, I'm presenting Escape Adventures. Um yes, the the email was faster than the check.
Yeah.
The check will be yeah, hand delivered on Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill?
Based off of that, I believe the best way forward here would be to make a motion to table this. There's not really much point in my mind in discussing a length of time here for him to come into compliance on that property until we've gone past the appeals time timeframe.
Right.
So
Okay.
I'd make that motion that we table this.
Okay, so.
Did you still think you'd afford still?
Well, I I I was just meaning that you could theoretically stay in enforcement, but you guys haven't haven't necessarily sought enforcement at this point. So there's no pending decision that you guys have made, but I think what's happened is PNZ has has kind of listened to the idea that the commission wanted to consider this uh as as an option for the CUP. So you're not necessarily staying action, but you're indicating to staff what you'd like to see.
What's
Stephen, does it raise any um le- legal issues if we haven't actually take? Like I I know in some contexts you have to show like actual harm and if we're not enforcing the order, then there is no harm. So is that going to muddy the waters for the appeal?
I I think, I mean, realistically, the commission always has the ability to enforce its own code. Uh normally what would happen and and Jen is here to help keep you honest, but normally what would happen is we would reach out to an individual that had maybe been alleged to have violated. And then they usually work together to establish some sort of voluntary compliance within a period of time. And in this context, the voluntary compliance was to see if you could get a CUP. So whether we stay or whether we not enforce it yet pending the outcome of the appeal, um that's one option. I don't know that it necessarily muddies the water. If you guys made the clear intent that you're not going to allow them to continue doing, well, they're not they're not blessed to continue doing operations at this point, right? And so that's that's where you guys are at.
Mary?
Yes, uh I I I agree with Bill. I think this would be appropriate to postpone. Uh because postpone means move to another meeting. Table means put it on the table and pick it up later in the during the meeting. That's how I remember. It took me a long time. But I was going to suggest if we did just come up with a time, I wanted it to be after this uh tourist season, after the fall part of the tourist season, give them an opportunity to get through the busy time. But it sounds like it might be better just to postpone.
Thank you. Uh Mike?
And that's what do we do? We have uh a known timeline where the appeals?
That's actually what we were just discussing. So normally it takes him, I mean, if you you came back to this topic in sixty days, that's probably more than enough. Usually he can get you a briefing schedule. I don't know how um how official the uh the hearing officer is going to be, but if they want, they can do a briefing schedule to give them time to make their arguments and then a hearing and then make the the order of the ruling. And so in a perfect world where everybody's fast, right, during forty-five days, in the real world, probably sixty days, ninety days, so sixty-three.
Okay.
Okay. And so I'm could you speak a little more about that uh appeals process and who hears that?
Yep. So I believe we were contracted with Craig Hall. Um and he's our land use, he's going to be the land use uh appeal decision. So what he'll do is the applicant sends off the application, pays seven hundred and fifty or a thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Then he argues to them that he should have been given uh the conditionally used permit. He goes through the arguments and says, this is why. Uh I'm not going to give any examples, but he argues it, right? Normally the county has the opportunity to respond, but in the awkward position that I'm in where the commission didn't really say one way or the other, I would probably just submit it to the submit it to that director because we had a three-three both ways. Now uh I can point to our land use code and says it wasn't approved for a certain reason, but the commission come up with findings that is supported by a clear majority. So then what happens is he reviews all the facts. He may have a hearing where both sides can present uh individuals. I mean, the county can bring individuals there, explain from staff, uh be part of the process. And then he would review everything and consider based on the state statute that sets out the rules for the conditional use permit, whether whether the applicant merits the conditional use permit to be allowed to continue. In the event that he finds that they do not, uh then he technically has another recourse if he go to the district or go through that process. Does that fully explain it? If there's anywhere within there that you want me to?
No, I was just wondering if there was any kind of piece uh that these individuals under whatever hat we might be wearing for the day, if that was something that we needed to be scheduled. But it sounds like it's
The records, the records, the reported commission meeting.
Right.
Um so I don't know, I I didn't again, we're looking at consolidating the whole record. The only time that we would maybe venture out is if there was an an argument or a conversation about things outside the record that were considered, but I don't believe that's the case here. So it's really just contained within the reporting that they had. And then he makes his the applicant, sorry, here's here. So uh the applicant makes uh the applicant makes the arguments and lays out the basis for for his claim and and whether he gets counsel or not is is a decision he'll make.
So Stephen, could you go back? I mean, there is this sort of you know, unusual feature that there was a tie tie vote that caused the thing to not be approved. Are are you saying then that the county just really isn't going to argue, you know, that no one's going to be arguing the other side of the case? It's just the applicant making?
I I I can make a strong argument that he wasn't approved for the application, but I can't make al- also it's harder to make a finding that he was denied the application. So status quo continued. So normally in a perfect world, you have findings, right? We we find that you couldn't mitigate the noise, you couldn't mitigate this, couldn't mitigate that. And and the commission passes a resolution says, hey, we found these these seven things. This is why we didn't approve it. Or the alternative, we found all these things and somebody gives. In this context, I've got the funky situation of where we don't have findings, but we don't have somebody that merits it. So what I can argue is, well, this individual didn't get a majority opinion of the commission supporting his position, but I But I, I can't really have, I don't really have fat findings to defend.
But is it part of the record that, you know, there was a motion that can contain findings?
Yes, yes. Yep. All of that.
Had a three, three type of, so the, so the appeal officer will see that.
He'll, he'll see everything that you guys talked about. So it's not like the, that he'll get no response from the county. I mean, we will make, uh, the staff will be available to talk to, the hearing officer will present a full record. He'll get, um, all of the pages of the application that are relevant to the applicant's, uh, position, all of the public comments that came in, everything that you guys had in the agenda pack. So all that will be ni- nicely put together with a bow. The two hearings that we had on it. I say hearings because we were in a, judicial stance, judicial, if I could speak English. Um, and they'll review all of that information and, and make a determination of it.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. That, that's a lot clearer to me too. Thanks, Stephen. Appreciate it. Okay, so, uh, in light of that, um, Bill suggested, uh, making a motion to postpone. Did you want to make that motion, Bill?
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we postpone this.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion on the table to postpone from Commissioner Winfield, second from Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion? Kevin?
Um, I was, you know, in, in the event that the appeal gets resolved, you know, rela- relatively quickly. And, um, and the no CUP, you know, division stands. I, I think planning staff mentioned like a hundred and twenty days and we also had an email from the applicant that was saying toward the end of June, which I think are kind of the same thing. So I ju- just, just wanted to observe that.
Okay.
You know, if, if it, if it turns out that the decision not to grant the CUP stands, then it might be a good time, timeframe.
And the commission would be in a stronger stance as well, if that's what happened to.
Right. Okay.
Is there any chance that in terms of process, they would define a timeline or would that come back to us?
No, it's really, really based on the reviewing the decision for the CUP. Had we done a, a violation, he appealed the violation. We'd be any different, but they're really supposed to just focus on the CUP. We don't want them to decide like, you guys should paint the county red or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense. Any further discussion before I call for a vote? Uh, okay. Yeah. Kevin's not here, but, um, all right, I'll, uh, I'll call for a vote on the motion to postpone. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously, five to nothing with myself, uh, uh, recusing. Commissioner Hadeen, absent. Thanks. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, um, we'll move on to agenda item two, uh, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five special event grant program review. Uh, Kate Finley, special events program manager, as well as Sky White, uh, just as assistant director. I think that is the economic development director. Thanks.
Great. Well, we're here to talk about, um, the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five event, special event grant program. Um, Kate and I have sort of gone through and taken what we have used in, what the counties used in the past. And with, um, some advice of blister stocks tightened up some of the, um, reporting requirements as well as some of the information gathering requirements of sort of post-reporting so that we can better understand the impacts of these events. And, um, that's kind of what we have submitted for your review. I just wanted to articulate that this, the funds that we're sort of proposing that we, that you, um, agreed to move forward with this year's twenty twenty-four program is sixty-seven thousand of five hundred dollars, which is in the approved budget for economic development and tourism promotion. It's, the account is actually one six four eight two zero three six zero 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 zero. And that wasn't listed on the agenda. I just wanted to make sure that was noted. Um, we just kind of rolled that number over from what was used and allocated last year. It seemed to be a sufficient amount for last year. There was some questions that I'll let Kate touch on, um, as far as the events and the permitting process that we want to consider and get your feedback on as well.
Okay, so I can talk a little bit about kind of the vision and goals of doing this update, some of the key changes and then a very late breaking but important consideration for you all. Um, so like we've said, this grant has existed in the past. The goal here was to streamline the application reporting process and also better align it with our event permit process. So my understanding is in the past, sometimes we would get a grant application and maybe people didn't know that they needed a permit or the deadlines didn't quite line up. So kind of moving forward, the view was, okay, twenty twenty-five, maybe we can get this all housed in approval. Right? So that people are applying for their permit and approval. They're doing their grant application and approval. And then they're doing their closeout and their post grant reporting all on that same platform. Um, what you're looking at for twenty twenty-four is a bridge year, right? Because we're already partway into twenty twenty-four. So we've got updated materials and a start at an updated process. But we're not going to be able to realistically get it all into E approval for this year. And a little bit more on that later. As in the past, the goal of this program has been to increase quality of life and quality of visitation within the county by encouraging, creating new and enlarging existing events. So some of the key changes and updates for twenty twenty-four, we set a mid-year review submission deadline. So all applications for twenty twenty-four are supposed to be submitted by June first. What that means is that if you've had an event take place already, in order to be fair to everybody, we would accept retroactive grant applications. Right? So we don't want to cut you out because you had an event in February. We're going to consider those again because this is a bridge year. Um, some of the other big changes are a little bit more robust reporting requirements. So in conversation with the county attorney, um, submitting a budget and associated receipts as part of that reimbursement. And then for the economic development department, more robust survey results so that we can figure out financial impact. So right now we do send out a post-event survey through approval. A lot of the questions that we ask right now, we don't get very good data back because we'll say like, well, how much do you think people spend or what was the impact? And a lot of people will say, well, I don't know how to estimate that. So the thought was we could create a survey tool. If we give you a grant, we can also give you the survey tool. You can send it out to the people who are participating and get better information coming back about like, okay, we're giving you a grant. What's kind of the trade-off of what's coming back as a result? Um, now onto that late breaking consideration. So we had a citizen about two hours ago contact us with a really good point. So the whole vision was roll it into approval. We do this permitting. It's going to be beautiful, right? Made the whole process and the citizen said, well, actually in the past, we've funded events that are completely within the city of Moab, right? So the arts festival would be an example, the folk festival. What do you mean? I'm going to have to go into approval and do an ITA and try and get a permit when I, I don't need a permit. Um, so that's just a consideration for this body is with this, this event grant, which previously was tied to our permitting program. Would you like staff to go back and revise the process to allow for the possibility of funding events that are just in the city?
And we have. And so, sorry, I guess I would ask, all that they would have to do is, is there a way it could be set up in E approval where they log in? And they have to apply for something and it might not be a special event permit, but they'd have to provide some information.
We can look into it. So right now, it's all kind of like a domino effect, right? Your ITA, do you want to do a grant? Yes. And then it's, it's rolled into an ITA that someone might not need. Um, so it's, we can figure out the logistics, uh, whether it's contacting the approval or setting up just like an alternate route for folks who aren't getting a county, a county permit, but still would like to apply. But just wanted to bring it up because the way that it's presented, like.
Right.
Yeah. It's an important consideration.
Yeah, Mary.
So what you're, I want to make, uh, so what you're saying is, uh, we should perhaps postpone this and let you figure that out? Or what would work for you or, or, or make a motion that we accept this with the condition you will bring back a process for the city?
I, I think, um, I think it would just be logistics on the backend of, you know, how we set up, you know, the application process online. So I think you could, you could move to make a motion to move forward with, with this program, but maybe like articulate that this grant program is open to events that both. Yeah, that both require a county permit or require just the city event. As long as they need all the other qualifications.
And I imagine them using that system would be helpful if for no other reason than gathering all the data in the same place versus, oh, you're just with the city. So it might be a little added work for folks, but for the money, might be worth it.
Yeah, and we can, like, this, like, two o'clock this afternoon was when this kind of came up. Um, so we can definitely get with the approval and see what's possible with the. Just proceed.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good platform and I think that it would have capabilities to some confident in that. Um, I think with some of the post-reporting, um, and aligning with the goals of, uh, supporting events that encourage quality life for residents and visitors, that, um, I think a lot of visitors come for kind of the vibe of Moab and that sort of stuff. And so I think that some of these, uh, events that are happening at OSA, that are happening in city parks where, um, it does a lot for locals and, and kind of enjoying that also attracts visitors because they're like, oh, look at this concert. This is great. And so I hope that we can capture some of that in the reporting and that it's not all judged on just dollars and cents. So if there's a, some metrics to kind of come up with, appreciation by folks who may not be staying in a hotel or something like that, I think that there's value in that in this program.
Yeah, Bill?
Did you say that this grant money was moved from a different account into this? Or this is something that was in our budget that we went through with the department last year?
Yeah, this is, um, uh, this is part of the twenty twenty-four budget that was approved. It was just a reflection from what we had, we basically copied, had done in twenty twenty-three. And that's how we came up with that number. That's what was allocated.
Great. Anyone else?
I would move to approve the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five special event program as presented and discussed.
Thank you. Second, uh, Mike, so I have a motion on the table, Commissioner Clapper, second from Commissioner McCurdy. Uh, any further discussion on this? Thank you guys for putting this together. I, yeah. Yeah, definitely. And, and I very much appreciate the program. I mean, and I've certainly attended some of the events that have been beneficiaries of this grant in the past. I think, I think we've made good choices in the past and will continue to do so going forward.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you.
Can we get a picture of Ben on everything that's funded by this?
All right. I'll move on to agenda item three, update to the right-of-way easement acquisition policy and procedure. And this one is our county attorney, Stephen. Oh, and Dan Stent, who is on Zoom. Sorry, Dan.
Dan's going to lead the charge, I hope.
Great.
I'm going to lead the charge.
I'll turn it over to you, Dan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the reason for this change, um, you, you passed a policy, if you recall, um, I think it was back in November, um, I reached out to some right-of-way agents to, to, um, get them under contract to purchase right-of-way. And one of the things that came to light is that having a procedure for doing a, a valuation as opposed to a full-on appraisal, um, saved a fair bit of time and money. And I don't know, you know, that these people are constantly working on the West Edge front. They were telling me that, that an appraisal for an easement could cost in the range of fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars and take six to eight weeks. Um, I don't know if that's the case for us down here as much. Um, but it did seem like having a policy where we could do a valuation from based on, you know, maybe getting a square footage price for one or two easements. And then using that square footage price and, uh, a certified right-of-way agent to do evaluation, um, could, could abbreviate that system. And one, one of the agents even recommended that in, in her experience, if you offer a five hundred dollar bonus, basically say you have the right to do an appraisal. We'll do a valuation. Here's the basis for the valuation. Um, if you accept this and sign it within thirty days, you'll get a five hundred dollar bonus. If you choose to get an appraisal, we'll go out to an appraisal, it'll take longer and, and, um, you don't necessarily get the bonus. So it's incentivizing to, to turn it over quicker. Um, so this basically Kristen, um, wrote up basically a policy for doing that valuation. It sets a cap at twenty-five thousand. If it's a, if it's a certified right-of-way agent, that was the max that we could do without an appraisal. It sets a cap, like if the county is doing it with their own staff, um, of twenty-five hundred. So like if we do have some, we may have some owners that don't want to negotiate or get an easement. They may be cooperative. They may say, I want to do this, you know, I'll just give you this easement or whatever. So up to twenty-five hundred dollars in, in value there, we could do, we could do something internally with our staff. So essentially that's just adding a an abbreviated step on to the right-of-way procedure, right-of-way acquisition procedure that you adopted previously. Any questions?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Dan. First off, this, this would, and this would apply to acquisitions, not, not just on the Spanish Valley pathway, but, but other potential acquisitions that count, the county would, that might come up, or is this just a Spanish Valley pathway?
Um, this, this is a policy that you're adopting. So this policy would apply to any, we didn't really have a right-of-way acquisition policy before, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Dan?
Um, this, this might be a question for Stephen actually, but I, I think when this came before, it's before, there's this, um, in the actual policy on the second page, there's this bulleted list and one of them, you know, the landowner has become belligerent or rejected all offers. And, you know, we, we discussed it before and, and I noticed this time, um, those clauses, they're not joined by or and they're not joined by and either. It's left kind of ambiguous. I think if they were joined by or, so just one of those three has to be satisfied. That seems sensible. If it's, if the intention that all three of them have to be satisfied, that seems a little, doesn't seem like a good idea to me. So.
I would agree. Or should be in, inputted after, uh, has rejected offer and then we can make them all semicolons.
Okay, great. So.
Except for the last one.
Bring that into the motion.
Good catch.
Kevin? I would move to approve the right-of-way policies and procedures for Grand County with the edits discussed.
Thanks. All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Clapper and a second from Commissioner McGann. Um, any other discussion?
And just clarifying again that the edits discussed were about the second page and the three clauses, semicolon, or just.
Thank you. Okay. Um, all right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. We are on to agenda item four, uh, storm drain grant, appeasement and agreement. And this is another one, uh, that Dan will be presenting.
Yes, so this is associated with the Jackson Street Storm Green Pipeline Project. It's a, a pipeline that, that runs from the detention basin that's up at the west end of Jackson Street and would convey that outflow from that down under highway one ninety-one, down four hundred east and discharged to the creek. At the end of that run, where we have to drop off four hundred east to get down to the creek, um, cause, it's, cause the, the road is, is becoming an embankment built up and then it crosses the bridge. So we have to dive off, um, to the side and, and go down and get there. We needed to get an easement from the landowner. This is essentially that easement. It's a, it's an agreement in a sense because our, it also factors in. This is essentially that easement. It's a, it's an agreement in a sense because our, it also factors in. Consideration, the consideration that the landowner wanted was replacing. An irrigation pipeline, a private irrigation pipeline that was going to be impacted by this project. Um. So that's all that they asked for in consideration. That's reasonable consideration for the easement. Basically, the the pipeline is gonna have to go under that pipe, that that. The storm drain pipeline is gonna have to go under his old irrigation pipeline. Chances are. Irrigation, the old irrigation culvert may not survive that trench thing. But we're gonna replace it for the full width of four hundred east, so it'll go from behind the curb gutter and sidewalk on the, on the. East side to west side where it discharges. I think that's it in a nutshell.
That's on the north side of uh, four hundred east?
Would be the east side. The easement, the easement is on the west side. Yes, the easement's on the west side. It's the, it's the fields that are used as pasture right now, kind of behind Maverick. Back in that area. The irrigation pipeline comes out of the, the neighborhood there by, I think it's Rowena Court. Um, that little side thing, it comes out of there and goes across the road.
I move to approve the storm drain grant of easement and agreement. Thanks.
Good, okay. Uh, the motion from Commissioner McGann, a second from Commissioner Walker to approve. Any further discussion or questions for Dan?
I just want it, the um, packet didn't say exactly how long the irrigation line. You know, this being replaced, as I think he maybe said the the width of the thing, I just wanted to double check that this. Like we're doing three miles of irrigation line or something like that.
It's um, the width of four hundred east street, so approximately sixty feet.
Thanks.
Great. All right, all those in favor, uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
We are on to agenda item number five, Utah Department of Cultural and Community Engagement Grant Contract for Historic Preservation. And uh, is, this is presented by Jody Patterson, who's the Chair of the Historical Preservation Commission. Is Jody online? Or is he familiar with this?
You know, I don't think Jody is gonna be able to make it. Um, so this was a, an agenda item. This is Elisa. Um, that I put together for Jody. So I don't have a ton of background or details. But I, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward grant contract. Um, and you know, there's no, um, ultimately, there's no cost to the county to support it. Um, we would just be, uh, there would be an upfront cost that's reimbursed by the grant. Um, and then we'd be working with the um, the other organization that listed there on the agenda summary, um, in partnership. They will be providing the, the other, the match, the fifty percent match.
Right, the Utah Rock Art Research Association.
Yeah.
Right, and and I do sit on the uh, Historic Preservation Committee. I, I was unable to attend the last meeting, but this has, this is. This came up about, it was probably a year and a half ago, at least, I think I remember. Um, and we've discussed it, I. I believe this has come to the commission before. I forget in what, in what context.
I think we're writing a letter of support.
Okay, right, I think. Yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay. Yeah, we have seen this, and I know we've discussed it in the Historical Preservation Committee meeting. And um, to my mind, there wasn't much controversial with this either. I think it's, it would be a good thing to, to support. Any questions for Elisa?
Um, so there isn't a recommended motion, is it, to approve the grant application, or what?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I probably missed that. I would say, um, I approve, approving the contract with, um. Let's see, go back to that item. Um, because basically we're at the point now where we need the county, so it would be the, the chair signing the contract for the grant.
So I'll, I'll move to approve the contract associated with um, this grant from. This related to King Creek Portal area.
CLG Historic Preservation Grant Contract.
Okay, okay. That's the contract that I'm moving to approve.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Do you have a second? Mary, all right, uh, motion on the table to approve, uh, from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion?
Bill? Quick, I just want to make sure that this is. For the B L M and Sittler Land out there, this is not affecting private land anywhere, is it, in this grant?
I'm not, I, I, I don't have an answer for that one. Do you, do you have one, Elisa?
I don't know if it's affect, if, there might be some archaeological or historic sites that are on private land, but I. I know that it's not affecting, for instance, it's, we did clarify at the last meeting that it doesn't have anything to do with the property. Um, uh, where the King Creek development is happening, so it doesn't touch that property. Um, there, I think it's mostly public lands, and and even if it was private. Um, maybe, there's no law that I'm aware of that prevents, uh, or that. Uh, yeah, that prevents development or requires private property owners to do anything with the archaeological sites on their property. In Utah.
I believe it's a national register, um, so I believe that any, any private um, person, if they want. I, I know, I think my in-laws were approached to be on the national register. I think a private property still has to. Give approval if they want to be on the national register. I don't think they can automatically be signed up. I, I believe, yeah. All right, any other questions on this one? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously.
Now Jody Patterson.
You can tell him that Elisa pinched it for him, so. Uh, all right, moving along, we're on to agenda item six, uh, Moab Podcast Marketing slash Responsible Rec six series. And to present is Sky White, along with, uh, is Maddie on? Great. All right, we can hear you well, Maddie.
Fantastic. Um, and sorry if my voice is a little hoarse. I'm actually homesick today with something, so. Um, I'll start out here and then um, Sky will jump in with more of the marketing focus piece. But this project, um, it's a six, six-episode podcast series. And the goal and purpose of the project is to um, help create more owned media for Grand County. That will out, that will showcase the areas um, outdoor recreation opportunities. And then also provide some preventative search and rescue and responsible recreation info, um, so that. People who are listening to it and get excited about Moab have a little bit of that Responsible Rec information when they arrive here. And um, more specifically what this series is, it'll be six twenty to thirty-minute episodes. And this type of podcast that's sort of in the adventure survival story vein is actually quite popular. Um, there's a few existing ones that we were looking at. Um, and it's a good opportunity to attract an audience and um, also provide that info that will improve their experience once they get here. The project is collaborative between GCAT and Grand County Economic Development. Um, it's actually been under development for quite a while, so we've had, had various meetings, kind of discussing the direction. And our preferred vendor is uh, K Z M U for this project. The timeline would be um, having everything completed before November of this year. And for the budget, so this was approved in our twenty twenty-three budget. Unfortunately, we weren't able to um, get the contract finalized until this year, so from talking to. Uh, to Gabe at the Clerk's Office, his recommendation was to bring it back to the Commission for twenty twenty-four, um, and then make a, a budget amendment. And this would be coming out of that Responsible Recreation um, budget. Total cost, uh, for that, the quote from K Z M U was eight thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. And this includes all the research planning and interviews that they would need to do, editing and production. Also, um, database hosting and distribution. And uh, also they would hire someone to do cover art for it, because you, that's required if you're putting it on different um, podcast platforms. And then I'll turn it over to Sky.
Well, I, Maddie did a great job. I really don't have much more to, to add to what she said. It's just, if this is sort of like a, we're excited to sort of try a new sort of long-form owned media. Um. Uh, marketing piece to sort of add to and sort of expand from what we're doing now. Um, and we're excited to be able to work with K Z M U, because they're local and keep it local if we can with this sort of test model. Um, you know, and then once we have this media sort of getting it out there and figuring out how to start layer, layering. Audiences from this potential new, um, uh. Piece of media on to discover Moab and social and layering all that is sort of part of our bigger strategy for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. With experts that are in that space, but this will just give us sort of a test to sort of see what we can do with this different avenue. And I'm really excited to be um, collaborating, collaborating with Maddie and her team on, um, you know. More regular, um. Routine and level with a few, a few projects, because we believe sort of marketing, responsible recreation and appreciating the landscape. Is very much tied to bringing people and getting people excited to explore here, which is kind of how you pitch it and and what's. You know, what that message is, so we're really excited to be working out projects.
Since Gabe isn't here, I, I just wanted to make a, a, you know, technical point about budget amendments, uh. I think Maddie, were you, you weren't suggesting that this, I, agenda item in front of us is a budget amendment? You just, were you saying that in the future we might amend the budget, or?
So um, I talked to Gabe today, just because, yeah, we, we weren't sure, I haven't. Had it happened before where we budgeted it for one year and then weren't able to complete it in that same year. So his, his recommendation would be to, like, if it were approved tonight, then when we do our mid-year budget amendment, we would make an amendment then.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks for clarifying that. So, so at the moment, we're just shuffling budget items around within, say, the GCAT budget. And, and as long as we're not changing the bottom line of the fund, we, we don't have to do a budget amendment, but. Later, when we have enough of, yeah, at some future day, we might amend the budgets.
Thanks. Um, yeah, this is, I think, uh, I think this is a cool project. Um, I love podcasts. I listen to them all the time, especially when I'm driving. Um, I think it's a great way to reach people and uh, the price that K Z M U came back with seems super inexpensive. And I also appreciate using K Z M U. I, I, I'm a, you guys probably know I'm a volunteer DJ there. I, I, I love our local radio station. So wrapping them in is a win as well. Thank you.
Mike? That's what, I actually listen to a ton of podcasts, uh, also on many different uh, media sources. Uh, do we have a list of what media sources these are going out on, or we plan to put them?
It's a good question.
Yeah, I think that's kind of the layered strategy. I mean, they'll sit in K Z M U, and I think we talked about, you know, getting them in the Apple Play Zone. Because I think K Z M U has, is in Apple's face now.
Okay.
Um, but, I mean, I think one of the things that we struggle with the most. Um, in what we have, at least in the past, is really how to get social out, like how to get people. You know, how to get people paying attention to what, what we have other than Discover Moab. So I think that's a bigger vision for our department is really getting expert support in our marketing strategy for that. Like how to really get exposure without having, you know, like a celebrity, which you might get, I don't know.
Yeah, i- in that, in that same line, I have watched uh, quite a few things on uh, K Z M U promoting them through YouTube. I mean, and it's, it's a big boy.
Yeah.
Uh, so I would love to see some ability to tie in on the YouTube, uh, the visuals. I mean, it is, I understand the podcast uh, nature.
Yeah.
Being very radio-oriented, but uh, that visual of uh, our area is the draw factor, so.
For sure.
Yeah, I listen to most of my podcasts through Spotify too. It's a great platform as well. Um, Stephen wanted to make a point.
Do we, will we have the ability to push this out on our own, on the county website, or are we?
Great, uh, Kevin.
Um, I, I move to approve the independent, independent contractor agreement with K Z M U to produce. Six podcasts about the Moab area outdoor recreation opportunities and responsible recreation practices.
Thanks.
Second.
Okay, uh, and uh, Bill, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just curious, I, I know this was discussed in the Motorized. Trail Committee just a little bit, Maddie, but will any of these podcasts be covering motorized?
I think they'll be um, integrated in, so I actually do have the list of topics here. Let me pull it up. Um, our idea was basically to provide the person who we will be producing this with topics we're especially interested in. But then also leave a little bit of flexibility, because, you know, as they're doing research and interview, the interview process, there are probably going to be things. That come up that are great stories that we maybe aren't thinking about or don't know about yet. But the topics are pretty general, so like heat and hydration uh, is one that's definitely a priority. Flash floods was a request from search and rescue, um, becoming lost or stranded, unpreparedness, uh, extreme desert weather. So I think, you know, the topics, they're not like specific to motorized or non-motorized. It's just gonna depend a little bit on what we get from the interviews. But I think we definitely would want it to be like covering a broad range of user groups. Um, for example, like becoming lost or stranded. I know that, I mean, that could be an issue with, with motorized. Um, probably all of these could, so we can definitely.
Flash floods especially.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Great.
I guess the only specific one, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I, I think you could fill all six of these probably with search and rescue stories, you know, and kind of. Uh, address all these topics with, I shouldn't be alive kind of stories, you know?
That's exactly right. And outside just stopped doing, they're, they're, they're out alive, so there's a gap to fill.
All right.
I, I should add that there's, there is one, I'm looking at the list here, there is one non-motorized focused one that we probably would want to include, which is the whole enchilada. Because that's really a search and rescue hotspot. Um, but we could also go back with search and rescue and and find out, like, maybe wanna do a few hotspots and kind of put them all in one episode. Uh, but we do have that one on the list, just because it's kind of a problem area.
And I do think that's our opportunity to get out there the most, because people search for that all the time. So like, if we have one, that'll bring people right in.
Great, Stephen? Sorry, just one, one odd question. So when they're doing the podcasts, they'll, they'll mention Grand County. Are we restricting their ability to? Take other sponsors for the podcasts?
These are our podcasts, so.
Correct.
I would assume that if there was somebody who wanted to sponsor it, it would be sponsoring our program, GCAT. But I haven't explored how that would work or what, what, I would go to you and say.
Sure.
How would that work? But that would be great.
Just, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, any further discussion on this? I have a motion on the table from um, Kevin and a second from Mary. Call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Scott. Um, we'll move on to agenda item seven, twenty twenty-four non-motorized recreational trails program grant application slash letter of support. Uh, and this one is back to Maddie.
All right, so uh, this grant application is applying for about uh, eighty-two thousand in grant funding. To help with um, labor for trail maintenance and sign installation, and then also for funding to purchase the actual. Signs um, that we want to put out in the field. And these are all on trails that Grand County has constructed, so we're responsible for maintaining. Um, we did apply, we applied this grant every year. Um, and I usually try and alternate maintenance with construction projects, just to keep the committee. Uh, the grant committee kind of engaged or prevent them from getting burnt out on too many similar requests. But this is actually falling on the heels of um, an, of R T P maintenance grant we, we put in for last year and were awarded. So the goal of this grant was to cover signage, because we're starting to see a lot of that stuff really reach. Uh, kind of critical point, like, you know, hard to read, falling apart, um, and then fill some of those maintenance gaps of stuff that we didn't put on the last grant. Um, I'd like to put on this grant as well. And so the um, R T P grant stands for recreational trails program grant. And just a little bit of background, this is specifically for non-motorized trails. There is also one for motorized, but traditionally, um. The B L M applies to the motorized one for the area, and we apply to the non-motorized one for the area. And we've, we apply to it annually, and we've been awarded it um, the last nine consecutive years, which is great. And just so you all are aware, um, so since two thousand sixteen, when I've been writing these grants, they've always. And just so you all are aware, um, so since 2016, when I've been writing these grants, they've always been due May first. And then this year, they actually changed it to March 31st. Um, and I didn't know that till pretty recently. So the timeline is a lot more crunched than I would prefer it to be. But if, um, if we get the application in before the 31st and then it's awarded, or we'll find out if it's awarded in late summer is typically when that happens for timeline. And then there's some time for the paperwork and that can happen anywhere from early to late fall. So I would schedule these projects for 2024 and 2025, or sorry, 2025 and 2026. And we have 24 months from when we sign the contract to complete the projects. So for the purposes of thinking about, yeah, timeline and budget, this would fall into 2025 and 2026. And for the budget, I did request a little bit of wiggle room because I'm still, um, you know, fine tuning the scope and also waiting on some quotes for signage. But I'm not expecting a flux of more than 5,000 either way, but I don't have those final numbers yet, unfortunately. Um, but as, as it's written right now, we would contribute twenty-seven thousand as a match using our full-time and part-time field staff hours over 24 months for that grant period. So that's about thirteen and a half thousand dollars for, for each year of the two-year grant cycle. And this is very well in line with what we do for current staffing for the trail crew. So that's how I try and determine the matches. I look at what we've, um, you know, budgeted in the past and then what we can offer as a match because, you know, the more we can match, the more likely we are to get the grant. And so for putting in perspective of hours, so for this year, we budgeted five thousand seven hundred and forty-four hours for the trail crew. And so this grant would commit seventeen hundred hours over the next, over two years, starting in 2025. So it's, you know, a, a relatively, it's about, you know, about a fifth or so of our total, total hours would go to this project.
Great. Thanks, Maddie. Mary?
I move to approve the letter of support for the non-2024 Non-Motorized Recreational Trail Program Grant Application.
Thank you. And a second from Commissioner Winfield.
And I, I assume the motion also included the application as well as the letter of support?
And, and the application.
Great. Thank you. Um, great, thanks, Maddie. Definitely, I, one of the things I hear most about the Trail System Trail Moab is just how well signed they are. Everyone really appreciates it and expresses that they wish their home trail systems were as well marked. So I think that it does make a huge difference for people, especially with SAR situations and whatnot. So I think that's a great, uh, great, great thing to promote. I, there was a, I just want to point this out because my name is on it. There was, there's a grammatical error in the middle of the paragraph in your letter of recommendation where it says, uh, which is known as the most comprehensively in the region.
Oh, okay.
Thanks. And that's all I had. Anyone else have a comment on this one?
I was just curious where the climbing kiosk was intended. Is that still TBD?
Uh, it's a little bit TBD. We have a sign from Friends of Indian Creek that was intended for Long Canyon. Um, and then I think there's also a need for ice cream parlor since that's become such a popular beginner spot. But it's just a question of like, how do you place that one outside of the view shed? You know, it's just a bit of a tricky placement because it's from the highway.
So Long Canyon would be Maverick Butchers or lower?
Actually, the, um, the sign we have and, and this, you know, we kind of inherited this from a, a different project from long ago, but it would actually be for more of the entrance to Long Canyon.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's so many dispersed climbing areas, but it's definitely a little TBD. We, and actually going out to Theater Cinema tomorrow morning at nine AM. But again, the grant's two years, so we have plenty of time to figure it out.
Great. All right. Anyone else have a comment? I'll call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. We're looking like we're in severe danger of passing everything unanimously tonight. All right, thanks, Maddie. Um, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, Termination of Dell Keys Lease Lot 102 slash 104 at the airport and approval of lease for K and K Airplane Services LLC for the same lot. And Tammy, our Airport Director, Tammy Hollander, Airport Director, is with Sun Soon.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Very well, Tammy. Thanks.
All right, great. Uh, so this is not a totally new issue. Uh, this was on last month's, one of last month's agendas is part of the right of first refusal for the county. Um, so this is the follow-through. Um, we've completed a lease termination. That would be step one for Dell Keys. And then approval of the lease for K and K Airplane Services. So I won't, unless you have any questions, I don't know that I need to go into this too much. We've talked to, talked about it pretty extensively in previous meetings. So, um, unless there's any questions, I'll let, I'll let you guys vote.
Thanks, Bill.
I move to terminate Dell Keys nineteen ninety-eight lease for airport lot 102 slash 104 and further move to approve the proposed lease for the same lot with K and K Airplane Services LLC.
Thank you. All right, uh, motion from Commissioner Winfield, second from Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion on this?
I think this is in the background, but, and this would be, it's not a new 50-year lease, it's the remainder of the term for the whole lease.
Yes, sir. Okay, great. Thanks for pointing that out, Kevin. All right, um, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously with Commissioner, uh, McCurdy absent as well as Commissioner Hedin. Moving on to Agenda Item, thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Conflict Public Defender Agreement. And this one is our county, our Commissioner Administrator, Mallory.
I have to say, moving so fast. That's lovely news. Okay, so this is conflict. So this is within budget and we've kind of been all over the place with our public defender contracts. As you guys have seen the past few years, because we had a conflict, a conflict defender contract. And then it was just over a year ago when we put it out to bid, we weren't able to fill that. And so we decided, let's just pick up all of our conflict public defender needs through hourly attorneys and that that's something we're hoping to temporarily try something different on because we've been getting really, really large invoices and without the ability to kind of plan for that and to budget accordingly. So sometimes it, it could work in our favor, right? We might have a month where it's a thousand dollars. Um, but we are also seeing that some months will then get a twenty thousand dollar invoice. Um, so this is an attempt to kind of change that structure. And this contract would be for a year. So it gives us a little time, but not too much time. So we could change it. So what they would get is the set amount and they would pick up all of the cases assigned to them. And we would just have to see if that works in our favor or not. But we would at least know what the max, the max amount would be versus right now where we're kind of at people's mercy and a surprise. And then you'll see the same in the next item for the parental conflict offender. But, yeah, sorry.
Thanks, Mallory. Any questions for Mallory about this item or Steven?
No, we, my, my office, because of the inherent conflict.
Ah, right. Understood. Got it.
Um, I didn't, so what's the total amount in this contract?
Uh, thirty-six thousand.
Okay.
And that was budgeted for?
It was in, in the 2024 budget, we changed the structure again. So it added back in a line item titled, uh, conflict contracts.
And did this go through the normal, uh, bid process or request for services?
Yeah, so, uh, five, we, five attorneys were contracted, contract, contacted. Um, and I know two agreed to contracts that they would be willing and the other said, I'm not interested in that, but I'd be willing to be on your secondary conflict roster. So with that, uh, they're also agreeing that should they pick up cases, which hopefully at that level they will not have a ton, they would charge us at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Thank you.
Just not specifically contract, but to illustrate, um, so that where this happens, when we have, let's say we have a car for people and there's narcotics found in the vehicle. If all four of them get public defenders, they can't have the same public defender because everyone's best defense is to say it was the other guy. So what the court does is they say the first one's going to go to Joe Alamea, who's the main public defender. The second one would go to the conflict. And then your third and fourth would be given an attorney off the roster. If we don't have an established hourly rate, you could, the judge could pick somebody and then they can just bill you, let's say there's seven hours body cam footage. They can watch all seven hours and then bill you a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So the goal would be to pick people, pick attorneys that want to partner with the county and be more reasonable and pick people that are going to bill you where I can technically watch the body cam or the internal, uh, in, inside the police car, there's a camera that points down to where the person would be at. It might be seven hours long. I could sit there and watch seven hours of an empty seat and be legitimate for billing. But you don't necessarily want to find attorneys that are just going to bill you outrageous. And it's really hard, I, I, I will say it's really hard for the county to understand and to, not understand, to pick the people that are not going to bill you uh, ten thousand dollars on a case they probably could be resolved with, you know. So that's, that's how you get so many, so many people and, uh, well, yeah, that's kind of.
And I think that's also part of like the hope or the theory that we're trying now of with a contract versus the hourly. It, it's hard to know.
I seem to remember that the contracts were ending because we had a hard time filling.
Yes.
Not so much that we weren't getting our bodies worked, so. And your, your attorneys locally are odd thing to say and they can kick me, but, um, a lot of the attorneys are, you know, aging out. Um, you know, we have attorneys that will work in the area like Craig Pauls, he's finding out the practice, Happy Morgan's taking on less cases. And so when you have less, less local attorneys willing to take on these things, it gets harder. You have to establish good relationships.
And so since this contract didn't go through the usual county attorney review, I mean, are you, is it a standard contract or is it? Can we assure ourselves that it's not like disadvantageous to the county?
It should be. It's going off of past ones and kind of, uh, the legal language that is used in all of our ICAs. Um, and I think it would be fair to ask. Can they ask if like you covered your eyes and you were just looking at?
I mean, if, if that's, if the commission would like someone to look at it, I can find somebody to look at it. It's just, the idea is, or the, the perception would be is I would pick, uh, somebody that wouldn't be as effective in, you know, that's the fear is that your prosecutor would pick a disadvantaged public defender to win more, but really, um, yeah. I, I, I think likely the contract's going to be fine, but if the commission would like, I can find somebody to look at it.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, you know, written by the conflict attorney or something like that, you know. But it sounds like it's just a very standard contract and I, I'm reassured. Thanks.
The only thing that I, I would look for, if, if I would give you guys a hand, the only thing I'd look for is your, uh, the window for termination. That's one thing that was really tough with, when the last public defender went, was I think they only gave us a short period of window and it's so hard to find coverage for that. And then all these people, they were waiting for cases. All of a sudden their attorney quits and it's like, or something happens to them. And then it's just like, oh no, what do we do? And then we have to conflict, find somebody that's going to take them hourly. And that makes it more difficult. So as long as there's a reasonable termination window. Um, and honestly, I, I didn't look at it because of the reasons we listed out.
Right.
I want to say it's ninety days in this, our, it's this, um, I want to say it's ninety days.
I, I see the number nineteen here. Yeah.
Okay. All right. I don't have a motion. Anyone?
I, I move to approve the Conflict Public Defender Agreement.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner McGann. And any further discussion or questions for Mallory? I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. All right, uh, on to Agenda Item Ten, Conflict Parental Defender Agreement. Back to Mallory. I'll just see if this is more of the same.
This is more of the same, um, except it's parental, so that's tied to, uh, like dependency and neglect. And, and the difference with this one is that it is a month-to-month agreement. And because I, I didn't think it was the best idea to jump into a year contract for that amount without seeing what, what our release is going to look like. In the past, we have had a determined conflict for parental defender. However, it was set on an hourly rate. And so with that change, I, I just thought it would be best to give it a little time and see how that's working out and case numbers or the filing numbers, uh, get an idea before we commit to anything too.
I can give some insight. This, this is also neat because, not neat, sorry, I can't. So the reason why it's neat for the county to start looking at this, parental defender contracts are dealing with DCFS cases, cases coming in. And so when you have a child that's removed for particular reasons, what will happen is each parent may, or each parent would get their own attorney. And so oftentimes in Moab, we have often three, three parents, sometimes four parents, um, where maybe somebody's had a relationship and they move on to the next relationship and they have kids with that second person or the next person. So then you have three. So once the county gets on a, a flat fee basis, you'll save a lot of money because most, most children have two parents at a minimum. So you're gonna, you're gonna have two attorneys, uh, if not more. So.
Yeah, and that's definitely something I personally didn't plan more that we have seen is I, I always thought would have more expenses that weren't planned for with the general defender, but actually with those, you know, that makes sense.
Great, thanks, Bill.
Yeah, I move to approve the Conflict Parental Defense Agreement.
Thank you. And Mike? All right, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Winfield, second from Commissioner McCurdy. Any, uh, other discussion? I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously with Commissioner McGann absent. All right, we will move on to our consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda today consists of, um, approval of meeting minutes for February twentieth, 2024. Uh, ratification of payment of bills, I'm pulling that up right now. Total bills in the amount of seven hundred and five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and five cents, total payroll, the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars even for total bills and payroll and the amount of one million ninety-three thousand five hundred and two dollars and five cents. Agenda, Agenda Item C, Letter of Support for Salt Lake City's Application for the EPA's Climate Pollution Reduction Grant. Item D, Grand County Replacement Track Kit and Associated Undercarriage Ware Parts for number eighty-three uh, nineteen eighty-nine D eight N bulldozer. Agenda Item E, twenty twenty-four Conflict of Interest Disclosures. Uh, Consent Agenda Item F, Airport Purchase of Type Three Glass Beads for Airfield Paint Marking. Uh, Item G, Voluntary Appointment to the Moab Mosquito Abatement District Board. And I'll note that there's only one applicant, so that's why that ended up on the consent agenda. And, uh, that's it. So I'm missing a page. All right, that is the consent agenda. Kevin?
I, I move to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner McCurdy. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously with Commissioner McGann absent. We have, let's see, that's the end of the consent agenda, so we are.
We have, let's see, that's the end of the consent agenda, so we are on to our discussion items. Uh, our first discussion item is discussion regarding ordinance number five eight eight, outdoor lighting and sign illumination standards from two thou- uh from twenty nineteen and possible revisions, and this one is led by Elisa Martin, our planning and zoning director.
Thank you, Jac. Okay, so I just wanna um briefly provide a background of the ordinance and what it did and um then I just have a, a couple um kind of prompts for a discussion. So ordinance five eight eight was adopted in um April second, twenty nineteen and the standards therein were codified in land use code section six point six, outdoor lighting. The city of Moab and the county worked closely on the lighting requirements and since then, there have been ongoing discussions regarding the need to revise certain aspects of the requirements, mainly due to the difficulty in um enforcing the requirements. Um, recently, the city of Moab approved their revised lighting requirements. One of the critical requirements that this ordinance implemented was the amortization of non-conforming outdoor lighting, which requires the termination of use of any and all non-conforming outdoor lighting fixtures, structures, lamps, bulbs, or other devices that may emit or generate light which is not in compliance with the lighting requirements. The ordinance stipulated that within five years' time from the effective date of this section of code, um, all outdoor lighting must be brought into compliance. The five years would effectively be up on April second, twenty twenty four, so just right around the corner. The city of Moab recently amended their outdoor lighting ordinance to extend the amortization period out another five years. Um, and other uh revisions that they undertook that we would might maybe look at as well, um would involve distinguishing between egregious outdoor lighting violations such as light trespass and um versus other types of non-compliance such as exceeding the max total light output. We would be looking to the city's revisions as a baseline for potential revisions to our land use code section six point six and then customizing the code language to be appropriate for county unincorporated areas. Um, we hope to have a draft red line version of the code ready for a commission workshop in late April or early May. In the meantime, staff would like the dis- uh the commission's guidance on enforcement of the amortization requirements related to replacing light fixtures and whether or not it is likely that the county will want to extend that amortization time period um as part of the revisions as the city did or not. And if, if so, would it, it would actually be staff's preference to put a hold on enforcement of the light fixtures requirement for the time being, but I wanted to kind of get your thoughts um around this and just bring to your attention that we're gonna be kind of fast-tracking this revision as we, we are up against that um deadline for April second being the amortization period.
Great, thank you, Elisa, anyone wanna start off the conversation, Kevin?
So um Lisa, I, I saw, I read some earlier drafts of the city's revisions, but I, I didn't see the final. But my recollection is um for like trespass lighting, or I'm, I'm not sure what term they use exactly, but you know, unshielded bulbs, there, there is no amortization period and, and those.
That is correct, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, so they kind of, that's why I was saying that they distinguish between sort of the really egregious light trespass violations that should be, those fixtures would have to come into compliance immediately. And I think that's kind of how the code is set up even now. But I don't think it was very, for some reason, that was problematic, um I think it was just not very clear. So the city did make that very um, you know, explicit in their revisions that those fixtures would have to be, um would have to come into compliance. And uh, and then, yeah, anything else that is um outside of that, that's more having to do with kind of total light output, um and the lumens that would have to wait until that would be um accounted for during the amortization period. And, and the reason that this is a big deal is because it not only affects new development, but it would actually, it would, it would mean that we would have more um code, code violations being reported um and or observed by code compliance where if there is a, a situation of existing lighting, light fixtures on a residence or commercial building um where there is very apparent egregious light trespass, then it would be considered a, a violation of code.
Mary, you're, you're.
I, I agree, especially with, well, a couple, a couple things is moving the time, uh because we were, there was a huge hiccup called COVID where everything came, you know, our staff was cut, everything came to a halt and people were definitely not worried about the lighting. I do think, I, I do think it's a, a good idea to have a lighting ordinance because I think it is big for tourism anymore. That's one of the biggest things that gets people here. There was a special just the other night on PBS about, you know, people more and more are seeking out places where they can go and walk out and see the stars. I know a family that comes from uh the Chicago area, that's one of the things they get the most excited about is seeing the Milky Way even more than Dellican Arch. So I, I do support it, I'm, I don't know if it needs to be in the ordinance, but I've also wondered if we could look at some way that incentivizes people to do it. You know, maybe with there, for a while, there was a dark sky organization, a group in town, I don't know if they're still active, does anyone know?
Yeah, I'm not, I think they've become less active.
They're less active, but I'm thinking, you know, like my son was saying with his uh welding business, he would be willing to make light fixtures to give away to people who wanted to fix their lighting that was inappropriate. So, you know, it might be worth looking at getting the group together and see how we can incentivize people to do it and for businesses to understand how it will help with the tourism.
Kevin?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mary about the importance of um trying to give incentives and subsidies and things like that to, to, to make the transition. Um, you know, and I really wish that we had gotten our act, you know, we, the county and the city had gotten our act together, you know, three or four years ago and started that early and but there only seemed to me a, a very few efforts in that direction. Um, the other point I wanted to make is, you know, there's a big part of this is extending the amortization, you know, the grace period for um lighting violations, you know, other than the egregious ones or the, you know, the unshielded lights. Um, but it's not clear to me that five years is the best choice. I, I think putting it out so far in the future, like we did that before and then we just kind of forgot about it and and then nothing happened for five years and now we're just saying, well, why not another five years? I, I think something more like two or three years, I mean, we could always extend it again if, if that's not practical, but I personally, I thought the city pushed that out a little bit too far, and I hope in our discussions in the county will consider something shorter than five years.
I agree with you.
Thanks. I mean, on that similar vein, I'm kind of okay with keeping the timeline as it is, because it's my understanding it's mostly complaint-driven. I mean, is, do we have a plan for somebody to go around searching for um lights that are out of compliance? So if there's complaints that are coming in, um I'm okay with kind of like addressing those as they come in rather than saying, oh, they've got more time. It's been, they can have seven to eight years now, so.
Yeah, and we, to your point Evan, we do have, um, we have been getting a lot of complaints and especially recently as the time period has come to an end for the amortization, people have been kind of waiting in order to um call in and, and kind of report the, the violations that they've noticed in their neighborhood and, and been waiting for this period of time so that they could report the, the violation that would be enforceable at, you know, by April second. So um we will be looking at each one of those and making sure that if it is something that's just outright light trespass and it, it needs to be enforced, we will do that, but um I think it is a little more difficult, the nuance of what the lighting requirements are in terms of lumen, measuring lumens and total light output like that, the enforcement of those parts of the, of the ordinance are kind of the, the um, the problem with, in the, the, the need for the revisions.
Thank you, Mike. Anything we can do to get uh more buy-in, more voluntary compliance, uh I would love that looked at. Instead of in- incentivizing, incentivizing uh is a great path, but that voluntary compliance out the gate would be, I mean, uh forefront in my mind. Uh, if we can get people to buy in uh in on this idea a little better, um that one hundred percent is where I would push uh all efforts. Uh, I was completely against this uh early on, uh but to speak to Mary's point, I guide uh night boat tours all last year, uh and so many uh people come visit our area for the dark. Uh, it, it is an economic driver, uh is it, is it a direct economic driver uh for the area and uh and it looks uh exceptional at night, so uh keep that. Uh, to speak to Kevin's point over there with uh the shorter timeline, uh I understand where he's coming from uh on both sides, the five years and uh pushing it back to two years. Um, but if we could get more people to voluntarily do this, uh that would help out far to enforcement, uh you, you're just gonna get people defensive on the enforcement side of it, so we, we've gotta cross that barrier or get to a point to get them to want to come to the point where we don't have to enforce upon them uh this, but. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, I, I see the extension. I really think the idea of matching what the city does has some benefit so that we're not confusing between the county line and the city line. I, I think that we'd ought to be working on whatever timeline as the two of us. I believe the city and the county are working on this together to come up with some of this, so I'd just be reluctant to change ours to a different timeline. Uh, I, I would rather match what the city's doing and I wanna clarify maybe what Evan said a little bit earlier, we are handling the trespass complaints as they come in, correct? And the second part of that question is we're not actively going out looking for trespass on our own as the county. We are just going based off of complaints, question?
Yeah, that has been the policy um for lighting, um there's been, for, for code enforcement in general, there's been sort of a discussion on whether or not on different aspects, we wanna be complaint-driven or actually more proactive. Um, so I think that's kind of on the table for, for other aspects of code enforcement in the land use code, but um I do think that if that want, if the commission would like to keep that policy of, of this being more complaint-driven, I, that would be, I think that would be up to you and to kind of provide that direction to staff.
Thanks, uh, yeah, go ahead. I mean, it's my understanding that that really comes down to a bandwidth thing and uh.
It's true, yeah, that, it would be.
Power, it's not, it's not that they're not doing other things with their time, and so
Right.
I think that it's not just a matter of us saying, hey, do more, but you know, funding possibly another position with, or I mean, I know that the code enforcer job description seems to fluctuate a lot between which codes they're chasing around, and so. Right. That kind of policy change might be like a broader discussion for another evening, I think. Yeah. I think, I think my inclination would be to, are you, were you finished Evan? Uh, I was just, you know, I said it's a discussion for another time, but then I was thinking, you know, one way that I was kind of um thinking of evaluating some of this stuff is almost like how the, the property value assessments are on like a rotating schedule, and so it's almost like when your property's up, the code enforcer would focus on that zone for the year or whatever. So they're not trying to do the whole county at once, but it would just, there may be more logical ways to schedule bite-sized pieces of inspection. But I think that um before we s- start finding people or whatever, there's gonna be some uh kind of education components, and so that's kind of also why I'm like, let's not kick the can down the road too far because I don't wanna just come out of the gates swinging with penalties, you know, so. The sooner the better in my point, in, in my book. Right. You know, I, I was gonna say, I think my inclination would be to, to follow the city's lead on this, but I do think uh, you know, a two to three, three-year timeline seems like it would be reasonable. And again, if it, if it looks like we can't step it up in, in that amount of time, that, that adding a little bit more is, is well within our purview. Did, did you get, um, anyone else wanna chime in or Elisa, does that kind of, does that give you enough clarity or do you still have questions for us or?
Yeah, no, that's very helpful, um. My own, my other, my only like last thought on this is that when, when we get to the point of adopting a, an amended um ordinance and requirements and we, we set the timeline for the new amortization period, um, but the, between, after we adopt that and, and the period of time uh that we have to, for everybody to come to compliance, I would really like to see, I think it would be helpful if we could uh put together some kind of subcommittee that could um really focus on the education component, um for, you know, coming up with the incentives. I think there are also a lot of uh potential um like rebates or um financial assistance through programs with the state and other uh resources that we could um start looking into. I think that was the idea of the Dark Skies Working Group and I know that that has kind of um dissipated and fizzled out. Uh, so, but I think with the county, it would be, it would be great if we could put together something and maybe, maybe even revive that partnership with the city again. I don't know um how that kind of evolved into going away, but it would be great to have some, some, some other kind of entity kind of focusing on this and carrying it through other than just planning and zoning staff. So that would be my.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. I, I do think that one of the prob- you know, in hindsight, when we set a five-year deadline five years ago, um, we didn't have any concrete steps to sort of have a gradual transition to, to that deadline and instead everybody assumed that someone else was taking care of it or was far in the future and then suddenly, you know, it's just a month away, we've done, you know, approximately nothing. And then we're looking to restart the clock all the way back to, to make it ten years to compliance that are just five years, which um, but I think if, if at the same time that we um revise the lighting code, we also at, at minimum set up this committee and have them report regularly, I, I think that would kind of keep things moving, so I, I'd like your idea.
Yeah, yeah, like what's? All right, um, all right, I'll uh close out that discussion, thank you so much, Elisa, and I hope that uh gives you what you need to work with. Um, cool, all right, it is six ten, we have one more discussion item, but uh we do have a citizens to be heard period at six o'clock. So I will uh get that going right now, if there's anyone here in the chamber who'd like to come forward, yes sir.
So my name is John Weissain and I live here in Moab and I um am a river guide and a water activist and I've been tailing the Bureau of Reclamation for twenty-five years. And um so um the reason why I'm here is I'm alarmed, alarmed about the lithium mining that is proposed for Grand County, Samon County and Emery County. And um I think maybe some of you heard that we had a blowout at um the new, the very first test well, exploratory well by Blackstone Minerals, um that created a an emergency situation to prevent pollution of saline water into the Green River, which was prevented fortunately. But um, I, I think if um, I think it would be wise if the county council reached out to Anson Resources, A1 Lithium, Blackstone Minerals and, and asked them to let you know, you know, what's going on here in the county. They also have uranium, um. They also have uranium um, interests in um, Yellow Cat. Um, there may be a proposed uranium mill in, in Emery County. These things are gonna, the, the reason why I'm concerned is all these things need water. And um, I, I actually read the sixteen-hundred-page documents that the Bureau of Reclamation puts out. And um, I'm here to tell you that there is no water. It doesn't matter if it's one gallon or one acre foot, there, there's nothing left in the Colorado River. We're gonna be seeing, according to Bureau of Reclamation documents. The Upper Basin is going to see um, depletion, um, cutbacks, short, shortage agreements of two million acre feet. And the upper base, or the lower basin's gonna see cuts of five million acre feet. And this, I'm not, you know, I know that you're taking my word for it, but I would. If you asked me to show you the documentation, I would show it to you. And because it, it's on the web, it is not a secret, this is the kind of stuff that's going on. So um, the reason why, I mean, so this is a Green River project, but. When there are shortages on the Green River, that's what Flaming Gorge is for. Flaming Gorge is to take care of those. But if there's not enough water in Flaming Gorge, then it comes out of the San Juan or the Colorado, and will that affect San Juan County and Grand County? So it's not exclusive to the Green River, it's, it's, it's the sys-, the whole system is connected. So if one project affects Green River now, it may not in the future go affect. Grand County and other river systems, so it's hugely complex. I think, I'd love. To give you a presentation to, to show you, it, it's scary. It really is, it's, it is a serious situation. So uh, the more we have more conversations, we have, the better off we're gonna be, thanks.
Thank you, John. Um, anyone else in the chamber like to come forward to make a comment? Yes, sir. Austin, right?
My name's Austin Carter, I'm from Green River, living the book, that's behind Green River. There's a big problem from what you just heard from John, I believe, uh. State's been playing real dirty there for quite a while, they've done some significant industrial sites, projects and. Last a while, starting with Green River Farms, which totally disintegrated everybody else's farms and houses and. The road, Hastings Road itself, it's named after my family's homestead, which is just. Absolutely embarrassing at this point. I wish you guys would rename the road to uh, Green River Farms Drainage. It'd be very much appreciated. State's not gonna, when you reach out on these issues, my house is destroyed by water. From flood actions and actually had hazardous material in it, it's being stored along the Green River and you get, they promised testing, there's no testing done. The DEQ in the state of Utah is not playing clean, they're just trying to secure as much water as possible, do industrial projects, they've destroyed all the farms. People there that have farms that they think are okay, they're not okay, everything's salted out. The graveyard itself has water running through it underneath it. I mean, I got six generations of family in there, Ross's, Hastings, Brock's, BB's, I mean, it goes on and on, um. I'm getting ready to lose my voice completely for the next two hundred-plus days, the next month, that's why I keep coming back every session. That's why I'm hoping to get some kind of a resolution as quick as possible. I have bison being used as a weapon against me, and let's be clear, they're not Ute Indian tribal bison, they're state of Utah bison. It's being severely mismanaged, there's lots of disease up there with a bunch of wild cows. And the bison, I got tons of data and pictures and all kinds of documentation. Uh, when you try to get resolution to this with the state, you just get attacked. Um, after three years of their bison hammering my fences that I've spent. I can't even tell you how many hours and much money to put up and keep up. They tell you your fences are inadequate, that's why I tell them, well, your bison are running through it. Um, I just like to get a chance to get any of these resolutions to any of these issues I can get. Before I lose my little voice, because once I go up there, I have no voice. I don't know how much time I have, but there's a significant amount of issues down there in the Green River Valley that could be addressed. Starting with the water, it'd be a, I personally haul water every day in my life, thirty miles a day. Was ninety, but I got a bigger tank, so now I'm just doing thirty. I'm a citizen, my family settled that vow, they got our family all over the museum, named everything after us. And I have no access to the river. I have a deed from Grand County, it says I have riverfront property, the Judge Anderson decided. My family don't belong there no more, and we no longer have access to the river. So if you don't have access to the river on your riverfront property. You can't exist in the desert, I'm sorry to tell people that. Uh, that would be a big alleviation if I could get that addressed, 'cause all I'm hearing is there's nothing to address that. That, that overrides federal law, that overrides state law, you can't do that. Uh, for several reasons, the whole ruling was against federal law because of the fence line that's going across a river channel. Can't put fence lines across river channels. Um, I appreciate you guys' time. If anybody could reach out to me to try to bring some resolution to any of these things, I deeply appreciate it. Uh, you guys have a great night and. Hope all's well.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on uh, Zoom who's here to be heard? Okay. It doesn't look like there's anyone left in the chambers to make comment, so we will um, move on to agenda item thirteen. Discussion regarding special events ordinance, Valerie.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna share my screen just to show the special event ordinance and kind. What I'm hoping we can talk about briefly, uh, which is the exceptions. Because I wanna make sure, I, I think a few people would all like to make sure that. Two things are happening, uh, one, that ex- exceptions are happening. Uh, when appropriate, and that is something that events for families or youth. That are intended to, to be able to happen, can happen easily, and then to make sure that where. Exceptions are hitting is also. But we've had a few come up where we're not sure, I guess technically by reading this. They do uh. Get an exception, except. In my mind, we've always had uh, the catch of if it's commercial. And so recently, we had an event that is for youth. Uh, however, there's a commercial element to it, and unfortunately. They weren't able to do away with that, and in the past, they've had events with the county and some have required a permit. Because of the commercial piece, and then they've been able to have other ones without that. Uh, so I think we figured out a resolution for the time being. For that event, but wanted to just come to you guys and see. Kind of if this is accomplishing what you would like, or if some of the ordinance should be changed up. I think uh, the or. Is where it's interesting because. Me, I, I guess I always in my head have read these together for a number of them, you know, if it's. At a facility and it's for a youth event and it's this, then it's an exception. Uh, but I, I actually am fairly indifferent. I just wanna see with all of you what your thoughts are, if this is kind of meeting the needs and then also. Kind of tying into the four-H uh, resolution that was mentioned earlier. And item C, uh, just kind of talking about county sponsored or co-sponsored. Events, and I never talked about doing more of those and potentially uh. You guys would want to drop staff so that we can develop more of a, a process that you can consider some of those. And that's a lot.
I'll add to that too, uh, I was confused early on about the sponsorship of our local events. Uh, we wouldn't be backing, like financially backing these events, the sponsorship goes along the lines of. Uh, we would be uh, four-H, we'd be uh, looking towards uh, holding their events at the OSTA facility. And that would give the, them the exemption of the special event. Uh, not needing a permit to go through on that point, is how I saw it, just wanna double check.
And so we have that uh, for the rodeo, I think right now they're the only like. True event that's hitting that level where we've set it up now, and this year they have. You know, I think like four things that they have to provide, so that the insurance there. Uh, liquor permit, uh, facility usage agreement, things like, keep it very simple, so I. I guess I have something to know if you guys would like staff to work on something. That makes that uh, maybe better utilized. Or more of an opportunity for some of the.
To be better utilized? What, uh, to come up with something, you said to better utilize that?
The sponsorship.
One of the things that I think, so how I interpret this, and if this is not what the commission wants, then we'll probably need to make a change. So how I interpret it, if you look at item B, B as in Boyd, conferences, trainings, lectures, sporting events, or similar events held in a. A permitted permanent facility consistent with the facility's occupancy and design standards. So if I look at that, I look at um. The wedding venue out at um.
Yeah, at the Red Rock venue.
Right, so what are they, Red, Red Earth venue?
Red Earth, yeah.
Red Earth venue, so if Red Earth venue has uh, a, a wedding out there, or maybe a commercial event. In my mind, I look at B and say, well, that's a permanent uh, facility that's consistent with the facility's occupancy and design standards. So if they had an event uh, of, that was commercial and had two hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty-one people. Then in my mind, I look at that carve-out, and the way that I interpret it is they wouldn't have to get a permit if they're contained fully within there. Same thing with Red Cliffs, if Red Cliffs had an event, maybe it created sound and it would normally trigger into that, I look at B and say. It's consistent with the facility and, and it's contained there, then it's not an event in my mind, and, and how I interpret it. Now, caveat that with, if they go out to Red Cliffs and have an event with two hundred and fifty-one people. And they have a conference there, but then they go on hikes, that's not fully contained, and so they would need a permit. So that's how I'm reading it, that's how I'm, I'm interpreting it, and then the other application would be at OSTA. Which again, it's a facility in my mind, a permanent facility consistent with the facility's occupancy and des- design standards. If they had an event that had five hundred people there, and that was consistent with, with their occupancy, how I'm interpreting it, it doesn't need a special event permit. Now, for the ones, the two examples that I mentioned previously, the county wouldn't have any control then. Over those specific events because they'd be carved out, as long as they're consistent with the hotel or whatever location. That may be why B exists, and maybe not, maybe I'm interpreting it a different way in the commission saying, hey, Stephen, you're going crazy, you should uh. We should, we really want to make that a permitting process, if that's the case, then the commission likely would need to change item B. Now, for OSTA, the commission has the ability to manage it, because it's a, a property that's managed by the county. So that's one of the ones that maybe if, if, how I've spoken about interpreting it, if that's not what the commissioners. Are wanting, then I would maybe suggest that they say, hey, no, no, Stephen, we don't want an event at Red Cliffs. That's fully contained at Red Cliffs that has two hundred and fifty-one people, we want them to come uh, apply. Then I would, I would suggest perhaps changing the language. Uh, um, you could just add the word non-commercial in front of the first word on, on a B to apply non-commercial. But with that, or, we're going to make each individual one separate, they're independent clauses, and the exception would apply to weddings, for example. If you had a wedding anywhere, you could have it at somebody's private ranch, maybe it wasn't designed for that. Uh, that would be a carve-out, or sorry, not two hundred and fifty, it does have that caveat as well. So those, those are the things that I'm running into when I'm, I'm looking at these. And then if we look up in, in our definition of special event, it does call out to this exception uh, as well. So that's one of the things that I've run into and, and if, um, yeah, that's kind of.
Well, and I think the question from the time I've been with you guys is like the. Things like Red Cliffs, no, that's, that is what that's in there for, you guys don't want to. Touch those if they're zoned and they're established for that, I mean, I think the. Part where we need some guidance or maybe need to clean it up is with OSTA, and I was trying to remember. Uh, when we talk about consistent with the facility's. Design and intended use, if there was something, because OSTA is zoned as rural residential. Uh, and then actually. I don't wanna turn ourselves in, but I think it is the only recreational use. Could be outdoor recreation and that's. Uh, so I just think clearing that up of what is the intent for a county facility and. My thoughts would be from what you guys have said in the past, that you might want that ex- exception. For a county facility to only be for item A. Right, so if it's a non-commercial family, uh, youth thing at that threshold at a county facility. You would want them to be exempt. Uh, but I'm not sure, and I'm also not sure uh, how we could set it up. If commercial events at OSTA right now are allowed to go forward and they don't need a special event permit. What we need to do for the state is they do need like a special event, sales tax ID. Uh, if they have vendors, there's various things to make sure of that.
So what, what are the potential downsides of, of granting an exception to an event, like you would come. Comes to my mind, it might be very large, you know, so there's. You know, crowding on some weekend that's not fitting into our system, and maybe like they don't have to do insurance or get a sales tax. What's, what's the bad about? Yeah, what, what types of impacts from these events are concerning you?
For me, the biggest thing is like the state. Needs to know for sales tax, if we look at the economic impact of special events. If we aren't having them connect to the state, pay those taxes, then.
And so a, a couple of ideas that come to mind is, you know, one, we could. Create some kind of, you know, special event permit light or something that is stripped down to just the. Minimal like insurance and sales tax, but you know, it's an administrative approval, blah, blah, blah. And another would be to add on, on top of some of these A, B, and C things there, you know, if it's over five hundred, yeah, over a certain number of people, then. You have to get a, no matter what kind of event you are, if you're, you know, seven hundred and fifty people, you need an, an event permit, you know, even if it fits one of these categories. Um, I, I'm just throwing those ideas out there, I don't know if that's actually fitting the kinds of things that are coming across your test. And, and one other, one other comment to this is, we own OSTA, we can man it, like from, from my stance. I, I don't think the county, the county doesn't lose any control by not requiring them to go through this event permit process. We still have Angie and we still have the ability to choose what we want out there, so it's. In, in my mind, if that's something that the commission is like, yeah, sure, you know, we staff and Angie and, and everybody should manage that. I think that's one thing, they don't necessarily have to go through this process when it's something we control. Now, it's when, when it's something we don't control, then if we wanna bind them by this, then we need to make sure the. The exceptions are limited to the things that we actually want to not have to get the special event permit, but otherwise for me, from my vantage point on. The, the county can do everything that it wants, it could tell them, you know, if they go to Angie and say, hey, we wanna do an event, you could literally just tell them. You have to do everything the special event says, and so it, it might be. It, it might be the same thing, we could just, we could put restrictions on there, and again, it's just contractions, it, it's just a different habit that we're. So, so is your point then that if, if the issue is mainly OSTA, we could just, instead of revising this document, we could just say, hey, OSTA. You know, don't take advantage of these exceptions, you know, apply for a special event for everything.
Right, but in.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Mike.
In the non-commercial, non-competitive uh, family, uh, the non-commercial aspect is kind of a hard note to hit. If I hold a softball tournament out there, I have to pay for our insurance, named Grand County, uh, additionally insured. If I take in registration fees from the teams. Uh, if I take that money and pay that insurance, that's me being a commercial, I, I mean, I'm making an income. Uh, on that, and that's a, that's a hard line. That's a hard line to walk, uh, I mean, I, again, I'm not a commercial, I'm just setting up a, a softball tournament out there. But I mean, the insurance requirements are gonna require me. I I love the softball players in Moab, but I'm not gonna pay their insurance for them. Uh I mean, that that the non-commercial aspect has been a problem on OSTA grounds uh many times before. That that wording right there.
So so you your point is that a lot of events like your softball tournament that we wouldn't normally think of as commercial
Yeah.
Technically are being considered commercial for you know, reasons that
I I would just refer back to barrels for bucks. I mean, she has, she has a certain amount of fees and yes.
And so barrels for bucks was uh I I will take fault. My my office greenlighted that. And then subsequently, when I looked at this again, and and that was one of the things that I had, I had not looked as carefully at barrels for bucks because I said, oh, it's it's gonna be low impact, it's gonna require a permit. And then I looked at it for the junior rodeo was the one that I looked back at it and said. Yeah, I I do think there's an exception. I looked at B, I I sat there and wrestled for it with it. Then I went back to uh item M, we defined special events and they put in one section, they put by way of illustration except as by section that cites their special events include events where uh entrance participant fees are charged or suggested or other compensation is exchanged and it goes on. Uh but that one I put low impact. And then again, I read through this and I I changed my stance based on just the plain language reading of it. And I and I did have a uh conversation with um Ms. Hoffman from my office. And she said historically, they looked at commercial. And then I said, well, technically, when you look at item B, it doesn't have any modifiers or any uh restrictions placed on it. I can't read commercial in in any reasonable applicant that's out there in the wild that wants to come have an event, they wouldn't necessarily read item B and and read in commercial. I mean, some of those like trainings, lectures, you might have uh, you know, like a CLA continuing legal education or when we have uh, I don't know, outdoor events, doing some trainings, people might be paying. And so I think that's reading commercial in right now in the language that it is, makes me say that that's not really feasible. If you guys want it to be feasible, we can put in a word or two and and change it completely. But based on how it's written now, I I just don't think it's fair to apply it. Um in those circumstances.
So Stephen, I'm wondering like the special event committee right now, we could better different book at events and make the high impact, low impact determination. Would it be worth trying if they could also make the exception determination?
Well, the problem is is they they shouldn't even have to apply. I mean, that's that's the, what it says is a special event. It's not a special event. I mean, technically, it's an event that's special and has all these people, but it's not, not one because it is.
But OSTA ones could be set up.
We can do whatever whatever the county wants to do with OSTA, they could make it, you know, a gauntlet that they have to run through. They could again, we're contracting partner, we can do whatever we want with them.
No, cuz right now, I mean everybody wants to do something at OSTA, they're supposed to be going through submitting and intent to apply without these characteristics. So I don't wanna make things harder, but I'm wondering if there's just a way where they could say, wait, we're reading this, this, this.
Sure, with a sure, with a sure proof pen, the county could set the policy that at OSTA, we make everyone that wants to hold an event go through this process. But it but again, I I I don't know what the com- the commission's intent is. And that's what I'm coming back to.
So 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 something that'd be very helpful for me is if we could continue this discussion some future data and just if you had a list of examples that seem like they're in this gray area, and then we could just look at them and say, okay, this should require a permit. I I I think hav- having specific examples like that would help. And and maybe you have some in your mind now, but I you know, I'm I'm not on the special events committee. I don't know the full range of all these things.
The the only, the only downside to that is those events will continue to not be considered special events. And if the commission's okay with that, then they'll continue to exist. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I think maybe you've misunderstood.
Be anything at OSTA where it's not clear you want them to follow this process as they have.
But I I guess that's a separate, yeah. So so maybe we'd wanna do something right away, like, you know, just, but in independent of that, if if we're talking about you know, modifying our special events policy, I guess, I guess I'd wanna just have a better range of examples in mind so we can decide whether we wanted to insert or or commercial there or not.
I mean, the the examples and and I see Angie say, the examples that we've that we've had are we've had events out at Red Cliffs that were wholly contained within Red Cliffs, the under item B. Are we, or or do you just want the ones at county? So junior rodeo, I don't know exactly what junior rodeo entails. Somebody can correct me. Uh barrels for bucks, which is a horse equestrian event where they jump over barrels and
Cannot deer.
Inside inside OSTA. I mean, that's and in Angie, like
The I think one of the the hangups for us is a lot of the the policy was kind of put in place for uh like quality of life impacts and and uh rewards and things like that. You know, we wanna support a local softball thing. We wanna be aware if there's gonna be some river runners rally at OSTA. And although they say everything they've planned is gonna happen at OSTA. Four hundred and ninety-nine people are gonna go out to the river and jump on it that one weekend and drive trailers up and down the road and all that. But then there's this whole other side of insurance and sales tax and that's, and I don't think that that's our specialty. And so I think that that's kind of like what we're running into. Is there some things where it seems like a no brainer? Of like, yeah, get the kids together and play softball. It's a great idea. But but if there's like, whoa, 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 slow down, we need to have some insurance around this. Uh that's what we're kind of like running into is uh.
Billy, you had it.
It sure seems like we have staff and she should be able to work through whatever those exceptions are. And if she doesn't understand and one or she asks questions, she ought to be able to come to admin or Stephen's office. We're micromanaging. Why do we need Angie, I guess? And and I liken this to um Bill Jackson. When it snows, do we micromanage which roads he plows? Or do we just let him use his judgment as a, as the head of that department to make a judgment call that he knows is what's best for the county. So I I I mean, if I was in Angie's position, I'd be pulling my hair up because we're micromanaging every step of this process. And maybe I'm totally off balance here, but I think that we need to trust our staff to some degree to do their job. And if we don't like their performance, then we start looking for another staff person.
Like Angie, I like you. I know Bill wants to do that. I'm teasing. Uh I know. Um I I actually agree with Bill. Uh we have Angie, we have uh the OSTA staff, we have OSTA Advisory Board. I mean, we've got a whole facility management team out there on that. Uh I would like to see it it's it's very easy to understand if a rodeo comes to town, they're not gonna hold it in my backyard. They would I mean, they would hold it at OSTA. It's the rodeo facility. There's, there's no other rodeo facility uh within our area. Um so leaving that decision up to her is one hundred percent, I mean, my path of thought. Uh now, if they did go to the grounds and then leave the grounds uh and her deciding that being like, hey, she, they were gonna leave the grounds and them going through the special event process, I I completely understand that fact or the but she also understands the fact of the, she has a a a list uh currently uh where it's a bullet point list. Do you have insurance? Are you, you're naming Grand County additionally insured? We, that's already there. Uh and has been at OSTA, uh I mean, for quite some time on uh that stuff. It's just we know that rodeo events are gonna be held out there, right? Them going through special event process is 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 actually hindering us from holding more rodeo events out there or softball events on the softball fields uh within a short, short timeframe. Uh some of the uh softball events in the last year, uh there are a thousand people. Uh another event left and was denied or didn't show up, anything of that nature is not coming in. Uh we can't fill that spot and we actually lose out. And someone who meets all criteria wants to fill that spot, meets the insurance criteria, meets all criteria, wants to fill that spot. Oh, you didn't go through the special event process, like you can't hold that event. But yes, we're insured, yes, every, uh every, all the peripherals uh are met. Uh we still can't fill that that spot at OSTA uh with a s- a like-minded event or an OSTA containment event. Uh I understand and I would want control over events that uh leave the host grounds, but just to have an empty facility is where this is coming from, uh or at least where my thought process in this is coming from. We're not even approaching uh the black. We're just getting to the zero line here or trying to get to the zero line. And Angie is doing incredible work out there with that already. I'd just like to bolster her abilities uh in that ability uh in that. Second point, I know I've been talking for a bit. Uh we all know that uh PRC rodeo is going to be held at OSTA every year. We uh Kevin actually talked a long time ago about legacy events. We we know the rodeo is gonna be held out at OSTA. I mean, in the future and perpetuity, we know that's gonna happen. But that legacy event list or legacy event, I don't know what to call it, uh needs to be drawn out as soon as possible. Uh those, I I understand timelines can adjust, be it east Jeep Safari in the eastern adjusts. But uh that event list uh needs looked at uh with uh with this as so both the facilities can know uh our our Grand County facilities can know and the events promoters or hosts of uh be it any force out there, any sport or anything can know ahead of time and schedule ahead of time uh for that. Uh yes, we want to get them all putting their information into can't think of the computer program we use. E-approval. Uh but I mean, we know that Jeep Safari is coming every year. I I I thought that was, that was a a known fact. I know that PRC rodeo is coming every year. I mean, we we should be clarifying that specifically for them. Uh I mean openly, we should be, yeah, you're here for the last thirty years. You're you're gonna keep going.
Like Park City does with Sundance Film Festival. I I think they publish this each year. These are
Well, that's what Yeah, and it and it doesn't word of mouth advertising, best advertising. Uh it it's free and you cannot hope you cannot hope as an event uh host, as uh PRC rodeo doesn't need to promote this event in Moab. Everyone within equestrian uh background of any kind knows that the rodeo is coming at this time, so for you. Let's circle back to the question again. How, so so the question is whether we feel like we need to change anything on our exceptions, basically. Or keep my notes.
Yes, and if I can say one thing, I I do agree with the things that are housed within OSTA and figuring out, you don't want them to do ad work. Also thinking of it backwards, uh what about folks that wanna use it and then they get going and it's like, oh you hit this, now you're an event. So it makes me wonder if everything should go through special events and it is just the like administrative or like permit thing.
Oh, I So I like the diet option too.
Just so everyone knows where they stand going into it.
Yeah.
But in 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 my knowledge of this, OSTA is a, is our facility, it is is different than a lot of this other we're looking at. So caveat of two things here. I don't know exactly which direction to go, but OSTA itself is a completely different facility, seeing that it's ours. And it's, I mean, within, within OSTA grounds should be under our purview. Uh outside, a little bit different.
And maybe best path forward right now is for us to work on this and for you guys to decide in the meantime, how you want OSTA to the direct staff bring something to the next meeting.
Let's just, uh Angie's been on for a while. I just wanna see if she has anything that she wants to add real, real quick, Angie.
Yeah, hey, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, Shock. I appreciate that. Um yeah, I'm on this topic. I I do have a checklist um that is with my rental agreement that I go through. Um and it does mimic the ordinance um currently, and I go through every item that's required with the special um event ordinance. So it does ask things um like getting a tax um license, um insurance, things of those nature. And I do go through each item. So I I am collecting those items uh when they're required, um their safety plan, medical plans, things along those lines. Permits when they're required. Uh and then of course, if it does beat the categories and require a special event permit, then um they're directed in that avenue as far as um applying for an ITA and things along those lines. Um the other thing that I wanted to touch on is um the barrel races. Um a majority of the barrel races, if you could kind of think of those along the lines as um a softball tournament for the equestrian lifestyle. It's, it's the same, same concept. Um but it it is their tournament for the livestock community, if that makes sense. Um they're, they're competing the same way. But instead of them collecting a trophy, they're collecting a paycheck and a belt buckle. Um there's really not a profit coming from that. Um cuz everything that they are making goes straight back out to the winner um and to pay for the facility. So if that helps um try to clarify things with the barrel races, it's, it's put on the same way. It's usually a group of people that come in um to put on a tournament type event um for a group of people and the money goes straight back out. There's really no profit being made uh when it comes for the barrel races. I know there was a question about what a junior rodeo is. A junior rodeo is usually put on um for youth. It's a youth event. Um and there's different categories in a junior rodeo. Um whether it's barrels, roping, uh holes, things along those natures, but it's, it's a, a community event for youth, same type of thing. Think of like a, like a baseball, basketball type game, but for the equestrian um athletic person. So hopefully that answers some of those questions, but.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Angie. Okay. Any resolution here? I would tend to to follow Valerie's advice too, well. Yeah.
Um I do have one other thing that I wanna just point out that if all the events and everything do go through um a different person. I really feel like it would get pretty complicated just because this is a unique facility and everything can be rented out and um reserved individually. So the calendar would get pretty tricky. Um and some things would get, sometimes things have to get blocked out uh because something else is being used. Um and things would get, I think, pretty difficult, but just wanna put that out there. Um it it may make certain jobs um a little more tricky, especially when it came to maintenance items.
You started to interrupt. I don't think uh, I think there's a miscommunication with that. We're not talking picking like scheduling of some of the day-to-day uses for OSTA. Don't worry about that.
Okay.
Good. So maybe they'll some suggestions will come back to us later. So we're leaving it?
I have a suggestion. We I don't know the direct way. I don't know the proper way. With OSTA, it's different. As a facility and within facility events, uh, I understand outside or. In facility events that go outside, I understand there's difference there, but O S T needs to be lined out as something different. That's my point. I don't know how to do that exactly.
I mean, that, is that not captured in bullet point date?
That's. That's my interpretation.
Even in the. Barrel race commercial aspect.
Status quo means we, we let certain events like Junior Rodeo, it just, they go through O S T however O S T wants to contract with them. They don't go through a special permit and they can't be required to. And that, that's, that's one of the things at the end of the day, I don't know that the general public will look at the exceptions, item B. And they, if they don't come to us, then they're not a special event. That's our, that's, that's the problem right now, we can't go enforce this. On them unless we make changes, so if you guys really want to make changes. We can come back, we can present changes, but right now, I'm, I'm saying that.
Can we have some catchall like, or at the discretion of.
Count instead of. Then people wouldn't know to apply or not, that's your hiccup. The general public is reading this going, oh, perfect, we've got a C L E at the hoodoo with five hundred people, great, we're covered, item B. So if that's not what, well, not, imagine it's Red Close, that, out of county. If, if that's something you don't want happening, then you guys should tell us and we'll come back and make changes to the events.
But I think. I get the sense that. Mission, they run, must focus right now on O S T. I don't know that anybody wants to take away. The exception that is of the land. Owner's rights, like, so need. Uh. So could we say? They can say this is, O S T is a county facility, so continue as is. And as the county, we're going to say what has been going through for O S T, continue to send it through. For the time being.
Yeah, again, the county can choose to just say, I mean, the county could literally say, we want you to go through the approval process. Literally just do that. Through the county contracting. Or they could just do it anyways, like how, how Angie suggested, she makes them go through and do the checklist. It, it accomplishes the, I mean, from, from my position, it accomplishes the same thing, but the difference is there they have to pay a permitting fee. And they have to go through that instead of contacting Angie and Angie says, hey, give us these seventeen documents, they give Angie the seventeen documents. She's basically the special event review team. So they could just do it through Angie or. The county, the commissioners could say, no, no, we don't want that, we want them to go through the whole special event.
But can we say for like right now until the next meeting? As a county facility, we want the things that have gone through to continue to go through this process. Not changing.
Go through means like through E-approval, that's what you mean by go. I, I didn't know what you meant by go through.
Go, they go through a permitting process. Or are you saying we just put everything at O S T, like that's what I'm looking for is. How do we continue as is so that we can work on changes?
Right, right now, right now, how it, like, again, how my interpretation, how it should be is it should just go through Angie right now. Until the commission comes up with, yeah, something else, but. What I, what I keep saying is if the county wanted to require them to go through this process and they say, hey, this is what we do, we require you to.
So could we say for the next few weeks while this is sorted out? Things that have applied as special events, continue to do so.
Staff could be directed to require the events to go through this process, yes.
And then at.
Sure, you can make a carve out, you could say, you know, item D, uh, O S T is excluded from this list of exceptions.
Fine, that's me.
And we can't just do that right now?
No, this is a discussion item only.
Uh, it's not an action item.
So if we need to have an agenda.
Keep going for two weeks.
To give Angie the authority to go through this process as, as a county staff.
If, if you guys want to amend the ordinance, yes, that's what you do, if you want to direct Angie to do something, you don't need, I mean.
Don't direct her.
Correct, direct her, direct, yeah, direct Mallory, point the direct Angie, that would be the other option, two options. You can either adjust the ordinance or just staff response.
Adjust the ordinance by next week. Or by next meeting.
And I think the order is important, change the order, we want it to be different because. Right, because staff changes. Things change and, and, you know, not all, not all information is always relayed to the next person. So, you know, you could, I think, uh, my, I, this is where I'm getting out of the conversation. Direct staff to direct Angie to do what we want to do as far as O S T being its own facility. And then by the next meeting, make it official on the ordinance, but make, direct you to do that right now. Is that what you're asking? If that's what I got out of the conversation.
Sounds.
That's what I got out of the conversation.
All right, that, that, that helps clarify for, thanks for me too, Mary, I think, yeah, thank you.
So that's.
Okay.
So offering something?
We should make it official, but I think from, you can direct Angie. To, for the next two weeks to do what's going to be official on the ordinance following, like.
Do we have any idea what that?
Okay, then, then, then let's just do the ordinance.
I, I mean, I, my, maybe I'm just being dense and I'm not following things, but. It, it seems like, you know, the big disagreement is, you know, the level of streamlining we have for O S T events. And, and I think as things stand right now, if we just follow this, I, I agree with Stephen's reading of this, you know, that, you know, O S T would. Events would fall under B and we would, and that would be. Less, you know, I, I think it would be more streamlined than it has in the past for O S T, so that's, that's the do nothing option. And then the do something option would be to either. Ch- change this or just direct O S T saying, hey, you know, you know, we're O S T's boss and we want you to. Apply for a special event permits, you know, even if it might put under exception. And I, I don't have a clear sense about what the majority of the commission thinks is the better of those paths, and so maybe. If you, we could just come back in some future meeting with a, a more specific proposal, like, you know, Mallory wants to do this. And maybe someone else, you know, wants to do something different and we decide between them or something. Um, I don't know, but I, it just doesn't feel like we're.
That tie, I hate that competition.
Okay, well, but I, I don't. I don't have a sense about what the majority of the commission wants to do, and, and I think some of this discussion about, you know, just where we draw the line is kind of nuanced. So I, I personally, I'm kind of undecided, so I.
So what I would recommend is it's one, two, three weeks that you direct staff to continue. Applying for events at O S T so that we can come up with a carved out streamlined process for them. Versus saying, okay, don't do anything now and then in two weeks. It's like, well, yeah, but implement this, this, and this, then it gets people in a weird spot of, just kidding, now do this. Like, can we just keep as is? And then be able to change it.
So, so you're saying that the fact, you know, until this. You know, recently people looked at item B more carefully and that's been a practical change in how we're doing committing. And you're saying, don't make that change happen yet, wait a couple of weeks, is that kind of what you're saying? Continue, continue to treat special events at O S T the way we had in the past.
Yes.
Even though that's not strictly like this.
So that there isn't a weird change of, okay, well, now you don't have to do this, away. Now we've changed it back to this, I, I think one change is ideal.
Yeah, but, but I don't think we really need to bring anything back if we're going to move forward. We just need to come back and say that we're going to allow O S T to fall under B. So if we let it go for two weeks as, that, till the next commission meeting. I'm totally in agreement with that, but to come back and put some kind of further. Ring around staff doesn't make any sense out of O S T, she falls under B and we need to let her. Work in those parameters and when they get out of those parameters, she comes to staff or to legal and fills with a special permit. But when we don't need that special permit because of what B has there. And I think that needs to be on the next agenda to give O S T. The power to operate under B.
Okay, well, my, my understanding of what Mallory is suggesting is, is, you know, until very recently. You know, we were drawing the line here on O S T events, you know, and maybe if more of them went through. The I T A, A process or something like that. And now, you know, by, by looking at B, someone's saying, no, the line should be here. And I think Mallory's saying, let's keep the line here where it has been for at least a couple of weeks and then, okay.
I agree with it, okay.
Yeah, I hope it doesn't choke around the line.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I agree with that too.
Okay.
But we'll make it official.
So, it sounds great, Susan. Thanks for.
Okay.
Like a labyrinth to get there.
Yeah, that's a little confusing, um, all right, so. All right, so are we good on that discussion? Uh, I'll close out that discussion then, and I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Um, make a motion to go into closed session to discuss, uh, pending and animate litigation.
Second, all right, motion to go to closed session, Commissioner McGann, second from Commissioner McCurdy, all those in favor of going into closed session, passes unanimously, thanks.
Thank you for. I was getting, I was getting lost, buddy. I like your diet option where the light option too.
I want.